Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Monday, May 5th council meeting. At this time, I will call the meeting in order, and we will do the Pledge of Legions.
The Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Shelley, will you do a roll call for us?
Albertson.
Here.
Bueller.
Danforth.
Here.
Manti.
Here.
Reeffenberger.
Here.
Roby.
Here.
Solom.
Here.
Thorson.
Here.
Tepper.
Here.
Vilhauer.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll look for a motion, a second for approval of the consent agenda. Motion by Randy, second by Bruce. Any questions, changes? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Number two, I'll look for a motion, a second for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
And a motion by Glenn, second by Beth. Any questions, changes, concerns? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Number three, presentation by Kevin Vanwell on the International Traveling Statue of Our Lady of Fatima. I hope I said that right, Kevin. What's that? Fatima, I'm sorry. The traveling statue of Our Lady of Fatima.
Fatima.
Okay. Well, Kevin, we've got a long agenda tonight, so I told you I'd give you just a few minutes if you want to light it up. Let us know what's going on.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council, for letting me come. The International Traveling Statue of Our Lady of Fatima is here from Portugal, and there is five statues that were cast that are sent throughout the world. This year, Portugal has deemed it very important that she come to our country. We're supposed to be the leaders of the free world, and we're not taking that very seriously. And I'm going to read a few things so that I can keep on track. But she is in the United States. She came in January of 2016, and she's here to remind us of what our country has stood for, what we're supposed to be standing up for, and how we're supposed to be the leaders of the free world. And she is going to be here through October 13th, which was the last apparition of her appearance in Fatima. So she is here. You guys have a schedule of what's happening. She's going to be in six towns in eastern South Dakota and six towns in western South Dakota. She's traveling to all 195 dioceses in the United States. This is words given from Pope Pius XII on a trip that he made to the United States in October of 1936. This trip gave him a glimpse of America to a young, to a sturdy, so glorious. He then made a beautiful statement about America and its providential place in the world. The American people have a genius for splendid and unselfish action, and into the hands of America, God has placed the destinies of afflicted humanity. May the noble flame of brotherly love be kindled in your hearts. Let it not die quenched by an unworthy timid caution in the face of the needs of your brethren. Let it not be overcome by the dust and the dirt of the whirlwind of anti-Christian and non-Christian spirit. Keep alive this flame, increase it, carry it wherever there is to be a groan of suffering, a lament of misery, a cry of pain, and nourish it ever more with a heart of love drawn from the heart of the Redeemer, armed with the arms of spirit and heart and merciful weapons of peace, wisdom, justice, charity. We must stand united against the wanton weapons of war, tyranny, hatred, and greed, then the grief of the world's bereaved in the graves of these martyred dead will be sealed with the tranquility and the glory of God's peace. Ronald Reagan read this passage in California, and he would never forget it. For Reagan too sensed that God had ordained America where it was and what it was for a special purpose, as a force of splendid action against the disastrous and catastrophic ideology. When she appeared in May 13th, 1917, this was 100th anniversary this last Saturday, there was an article in the public opinion, which I have not read yet, that was supposed to be, on the canonization of the two youngest shepherds that she appeared to and what her story was. She came at the time when World War I was coming to an end. World War II had not come yet, but she said that World War I would end if the people would pray, repent, and sacrifice, and come back to God like they were supposed to. She said if that does not happen, a greater, more intense war will come, and of course, we know World War II came. I'm going to have a blog. I was on KXLG last week. I was on KWAT, KXLG, last week. I was on KSDR this morning. There's going to be a blog this coming week that's going to be at every one of them that's going to explain the whole story if you don't know what it is. So after that, I'm going to read what happened to America. April 30th, 1779, this was the proclamation that went forth. On the morning of the day in which our illustrious president was to be invested with his office, the bells will ring at nine o'clock, when the people may go up to the house of God in a solemn manner, commit the new government with its important train of consequences, to the holy protection and blessing of the Most High, an early hour prudently fixed for this particular act of devotion, and is designed wholly for prayer. George Washington gave his inaugural address, took the House and Senate a couple of blocks down the street to St. Paul's Chapel, and consecrated our country to God, and asked for his protection over us. America would rise to heights no other nation had ever attained, not that it was ever with fault or sin, but it would always aspire, one way or another, to fulfill the calling envisioned by its founders at its inception, which was to be a vessel of redemption, a light to the world, and so would give refuge to the world's poor and needy, and hope to its oppressed. It would stand more than once against the dark movements of the modern age that has threatened the world, and to liberate millions from oppression, and to possess what become the most, and in the process, it would become the most blessed, most prosperous, the most powerful, and the most revered nation on earth. America's greatest moments, there was always sin, in its worst moments greatness, but there was a critical juncture. In the middle of the 20th century, America began officially removing God from its national life. It abolished prayer and scripture in its public schools. As ancient Israel had removed the Ten Commandments from its national consciousness, so America did likewise, removing the Ten Commandments from public view, banning it from its public square, and taking it down by government decree from its walls. As it was in ancient Israel, so too in America, God was progressively driven out of the nation's public life. The very mention of the name of God or Jesus in any relevant context became more and more taboo and unwelcome unless for the purpose of mockery and attack, to which has been revered, a sacred, has now increased, treated as profanity. And as God was driven out, idols were brought in to replace him. But America doesn't worship idols. No, we just don't call them idols. As God was expunged from American life, idols came to fill the void. Idols of sensuality, idols of greed, of money, success, comfort, materialism, pleasure, sexual immorality, self-worship, and self-obsession.
Hey, Kevin.
Yes?
I hate to break in, but I don't have much more time.
Okay.
But what I was hoping for is that-
So what's happening is our country, this is what's happening to our country. This is what Portugal has deemed her to come here for, to remind us what we stand for and what our country was supposed to be as the light of the world.
And then the six towns or something, which towns are those, and I think that you mentioned?
It's going to be Sioux Falls, Watertown was picked, Mitchell, Wagner, and I forgot the other one.
Okay. But I think what you're having, when you get into Watertown, there's going to be a police escort.
There's going to be a police escort. We're going to have our services at the church at Immaculate Conception. Then there's going to be a procession around City Hall and the courthouse praying for our country. We pray for our state. We pray for our city. We're praying for our nation.
Perfect. Have you guys got any questions about what's going to happen on this occasion? Otherwise, well, Kevin, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, Steve.
It'll be exciting to see what-
Any questions up there? There's a letter that went out to all the ministerial associations, so if there's any questions, you can give me a call.
Thanks, Kevin. We appreciate you being here. Thank you. Okay, number four, application for a new package off-sale malt beverage license to Target Corporation doing business as Target Stores at 2009th Avenue Southeast. This will be kind of a long discussion, I think, is what we're going to have this evening. I'm going to open the public hearing at this time. So what I'm going to do is allow anybody to come up and speak to the council if they would like. If we could, if we could hold, you know, if there's been a question asked or a comment made, if we wouldn't repeat ourselves on this, then we'll get moving. So as I said, I have a public hearing opening right now. So if there's anybody in the audience that wants to speak in favor of or against this, this is your opportunity to do this. And John, if you'll hit the button and tell us who you are and all that good stuff.
Got it. John May, local business owner. I've got just two things that, I guess, one of them, I just was reading through the ordinances the other day, and it's a question, but I'll hold that back just for a second. This thing does kind of concern me, not only on the business aspect of it, but I'm a parent of two soon-to-be teenagers. I have one 14-year-old and one that's going to be 13 soon. I remember growing up in this town, and I never found it weird that we didn't find liquor in grocery stores or anywhere else except for actual liquor stores. As a matter of fact, knowing myself, it kept me out of trouble for a lot longer than it might have. The concern with me is that nowadays, that with the way we draw younger people to our shopping centers, we're willingly putting something within access of them thieving, stealing, finding some other reason to have it, possession in the store. We all see it, walking around stores, any size, where you see open cans of pop scattered throughout the store, energy drinks, things like that. According to the National Retail Federation, liquor is still the sixth most stole product in the United States. In the grocery category, it's the fourth. Under cigarettes, meat, and then it's liquor. Sorry, it was a third, and the last one's baby formula. So that, to me, is, we're given, by even entertaining this idea without some kind of control or limit of control, I have a feeling we're going to see a dramatic increase in things that we don't want to see. If people truly want liquor, we've got eight liquor stores within the city limits, or 10 actually, but eight that are fully functional liquor stores, and 20,000 people plus people coming in, I think that's adequate enough to speak for itself. I don't rarely hear people complaining that, you know, they had to make one extra stop in Watertown. On the other aspect of it was just a question on how the city council really sees ordinance 2.0108, and I'll read it as is. Underage prohibited in premises holding alcoholic beverage license. This is found underneath where packaged liquor license fall under as well. It says, "No person under the age set by SDCL Title 35 for consumption of alcohol beverage shall loiter on the licensed premises." My daughter goes to big box stores, the mall, and things like that, where she'll be exposed to more of this stuff now, and they don't necessarily shop. They kind of meander around, you know, they're looking at stuff, but temptation for that kind of a thing would be more li, or just more out there. And I guess that's, like I said, the biggest concern. So I was just kind of seeing how we're supposed to interpret that on the aspect of, I know in the past, we've had to have separate door laws, and that's worked out fine for the city. I have no problem with Target coming to the market. I would like them to see them follow the same statutes that we all have. So, and I think that ordinance is the one that we've played around before.
I think what you're saying there, John, if I understand you correctly, if they had a separate enclosed area within their store.
Correct.
Would still be okay with you, rather than just right on an aisle?
Right.
I understand that. Okay. Any guys got any questions for John? Well, thanks, John. I appreciate it. Anybody else want to speak in favor of or against this issue? Come on up.
My name is Stan Lamb. I'd like to speak in favor of leaving the ordinance the way it is. I agree with the gentleman that preceded me, as far as not needing it in a box store, grocery store, whatever. We have, I'm not aware of how many liquor stores there are, but according to the information just received, it seems to me like there's plenty available. I don't think, I don't think it's necessary that we put it in the grocery stores or in these other department stores. I would even be, I would even speak against having a separate place within a store. I think where, the way it's set up now is sufficient. It's been that way for a long time, and that doesn't mean it's good, but in my mind, this particular one is. And I think that our police resources are valuable to us, and I think we should do what we can to keep those resources to protect us and not have to spend so much time patrolling as far as where the liquor and alcohol is used. I think it's sufficient with, the way it's provided for the public now, and I just encourage the council to leave it the way it is. Thank you.
Thanks, Stan. Appreciate it. Anybody else?
Hello. My name's Tim Olson, and I'm the store manager of the local Target here in town. And what, I'm speaking, obviously, in favor of the liquor license approval. And what we're trying to do is similar to what's already been done in Aberdeen, and Sioux Falls, and Rapid City, where we have other Target stores. We follow all similar or exact same practices as those stores who do sell malt beverages in their stores. And the reason that those were provided or instituted in 1993 in those stores was to provide a one-stop-shop experience for our guests. It's part of that enhanced experience that Target strives to go after, to provide. And I think that, in speaking with all of those stores leading up to today, they have countless guests on a weekly basis that express how thankful they are that they have everything in one spot. I'm a father myself. I think about the impact, as spoken previously, and as a parent, in any other place I've lived, they provide that same service, and there's no disconnect for my children or any impact negatively that way. In fact, as a parent, I'm actually thankful that there is a spot where I can make one stop and not have to make three different, you know, destination stops when I'm collecting groceries and those types of things. Also would like to address that we do meet all legal and zoning business requirements currently established by the city of Watertown for the license. And I understand the past things might have been addressed differently through the council, but that is something that we've done good research on, implemented. As far as the way that we do practice all of the, any potential theft process, we have very strict and diligent manner in which we flow through the receiving process into the store, the merchandising guidelines, the point of sale, and asset protection, both in the store, constantly monitoring, and through our headquarters in Minneapolis. I would say probably top standard from a retail environment on what you could have in place to prevent any misuse or mistrust by the guest to thief from that. Any questions at all?
Any questions for Tim, from any of you folks?
Just really quickly, how big are the grocery areas? This is my own curiosity of those other stores that you spoke of?
They have, most of the other stores have what we call P-Fresh, and so it's a middle ground. Super Target would have the full grocery. P-Fresh has a smaller assortment of produce, and then about 10 to 12 aisles of dry grocery.
Okay. So ours is just a little smaller than that. Okay.
Correct. Yeah, we're on the smaller side of the scale. We have three aisles of grocery, and what we're looking to implement in our store here with this license is really just one item cap.
Okay.
Of wine and beer. So it's a very small assortment.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
It'd just probably be better to finish the public hearing, and then if we need to bring people back up and ask questions, that'd probably be better.
All right. That works for me. Anybody else want to speak in favor of or against this? This is your opportunity. Go ahead. Somebody, a couple, two, three there.
We're all fighting to do.
Yeah. We draw straws.
I'm Kelly Rumps. I'm with the Watertown Healthy Youth Coalition. I've been doing my job for 19 years, and what our focus is educating our community on the risk-taking behaviors and choices that affect our youth in the community. We focus on changing community social norms that accept underage drinking and other unhealthy risk-taking behaviors that helps to make Watertown a healthy and safe place for our youth. And so a lot of our time is spent collecting data, watching trends, and working with local organizations and businesses in the community on ways of how we can keep our youth safe. And one of our primary focuses is underage drinking in the community. And one of those is accessibility. We know, research shows, data shows, that the more access that you have available, the more likely that youth are going to use. And when youth are more likely to use, there's going to be an increase in other behaviors, whether it's vandalism, burglary, sexual behaviors, you know, maybe experimenting with other drugs, that type of thing. The other piece of retail access is maybe not necessarily the kids going in and stealing themselves, but it's more opportunity for of-age adults to go in and buy for the minor, where it might be, hey, you're going in there, can you just grab us something? Or it might be, as people say, convenient. Sometimes you have to put some thought into whether you're going to buy alcohol or whatnot, and so you go to your liquor store. Here, it could be more of an impulse buy, so families or parents and adults will have more of that in their home, where then the kids would have access to that alcohol, and that opens up the can of worms with social access as well, where there might be more in the fridge and that type of thing. With alcohol density, we do see the level of alcohol harm and problems that do exist. And it's just something of a social norm piece of it. Do we want our youth to see that, okay, you're going into your store, so you're going to pick up your basic needs of milk, eggs, whatever, and also your case of beer or your wine as well? With the impulsivity and with social media and just that quick fix or that quick need of things, again, we're validating that alcohol has to be a part of a life or that it's part of that social norm. And so we send out those mixed messages to our youth as well. So we need to consider the health and social problems that are both tragic and costly when it comes to underage and binge drinking. For Watertown, at the last meeting, when I was reading through the minutes, city council, you guys approved already 62 existing malt beverage licenses in our community, and I would say that is fairly convenient in our community with our population. Also, separate from that, with alcohol license, we do have 10 in the community. We do have nine that are within the city limits, and very accessible. We have drive-throughs, and actually, we have more liquor stores than what is supposed to be by state statute, but because of zoning and grandfathering in, we actually have more liquor stores than what we're supposed to with our population density. And so our viewpoint with our prevention efforts, with our youth, is we don't want to have more access to alcohol for our youth in the community, because we know that other problems can arise from that.
Okay. Well, thanks, Kelly.
You bet.
Does anybody else want to speak in favor of or against this?
Hi. We're Brian and Tanya Perry. Our concern is, we moved here a couple of years ago. We got the business, we've never been business owners, so this is our first business that we've owned. And we kind of got this opportunity to move closer to family. So we kind of uprooted our family from Sioux Falls area. We lived there 21 years, and it's been great here. We knew coming to Watertown, it was a growing, and we love it. And shopping local, I, like, the radio stations are great, you know, they promote shopping, small, local stores here, so we appreciate that. And we've given back to the community. Anybody that's come in and asked for donations, we've always give, you know, we think that's great. And so our concern is just, you know, if this goes into Target, will it go into Walmart? I mean, that, we're on the edge of town. We count on Walmart sends people over to us all the time. And we count on that, and it's, it helps us. So bringing it into these bigger stores will hurt us. And so we just, that's about it, I guess.
Perfect. Anything else?
Nope. I think that's it.
Okay. Well, thank you for being here.
Yeah.
Anybody else want to speak in favor of or against this?
Hi, guys. Take my hat off in front of you guys?
No, 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 that's okay.
I took-
State your name, though.
Randy Grunwald. I own Dakota Butcher and Clark in Watertown, and trying to put another one on East Side of Watertown, too, with a beer license. I'm trying, I was trying to think the positives of getting these super centers, the Targets, the Walmarts, the super Hy-Vee's to make them one-stop shops. You know, that was one of the positives, that they said one-stop shops. Well, the Dakota Butchers that I currently own, I believe when we get this third location open, we're going to have over 60-some employees. And if we have all these one-stop shops, I don't know if I would be able to continue with creating, paying for advertisement to the, like, LT, I forget, I'm sorry, I forgot her name, the LT's owners. And there's a lot more to it than a one-stop shop. What we need to do is, we need to get the people, draw them in with the Targets and the Walmarts into our communities, and let them see all the other things we have for these, the other, the Dakota Butchers and the LT's and the discount liquors. And to be quite frank with you guys, the advertisement that I hear every day, I got to think of one other way to advertise better than discount liquor, because he's, he's spending all his money. And we appreciate the, we do. I think our liquor stores really appreciate the competition amongst ourselves, and we try to, I mean, there's, they're not going to save a lot of money, because we can only go so low on our prices, and they're too low now. Don't you agree? But what I'm trying to say is, by having these one-stop shops and having, and all the other things that these guys are talking about, the kids and whatnot, that's very important things, too. Very, very, I mean, kids are our most important asset, but I think getting these business owners that live in town and move to town, and we're moving our family to town, and my son's moving here, and it's important for us to not make our community a one-stop shop. Just because the Sioux Falls and all these other towns made the mistake of letting them have alcohol in their stores, that doesn't mean that's right. It means that they're more powerful, and they, that, we're just spreading out the dollars. You know, they're not, we're not going to, we're not going to get more dollars into our community, more sales tax dollars, just because the Walmarts and the Targets and the Hy-Vee's have the opportunity to sell liquor. We're just spreading it out, and we're taking away from the guys that are paying all the advertisements and hiring all the employees, because those large businesses aren't going to, they're not going to add to their payroll as much as we have already done for our communities. So I just had that. So thank you for your time.
Hey, thanks, Randy. Anybody else? Come on up.
Darryl Crandall, Assistant Manager at Walmart. I guess part of the reason I'm here tonight is just some, you know, the facts. There's short on facts here. Your May 1st work session, somebody made the comment that Target or Walmart's liquor sale is going to take away from discount liquor, and I don't know why you singled them out, but we're by interstate. A lot of people that come off the interstate don't drive all the way into Watertown. They're just passing through, and they want to make their one-stop shop there. And going to Randy's point about the one-stop shop, I myself do shop at Dakota Butcher, because he has specialty- because he has specialty products we don't carry at Walmart, so I don't know where we're taking. Walmart doesn't take his meat sales away. If anything, he's taking some of our meat sales away. So I mean, it works through, it's a niche in the community. The mayor, now, when he's on the radio last week, said that the big-box stores aren't going to get their liquor from the local distributors.
And I did say that. I think you called in and corrected me on that. Yeah, I think you did correct me. You said that you buy it local. I have not had a chance to look at that.
Yeah, well, I--
I apologize that I mentioned it like that.
Well, I've worked at another Walmart, another Walmart, where we had beer and wine coolers, and it all comes from the local distributors. And Walmart does not ship them in a Walmart truck.
Right, and I do think that it was mentioned at another time, that the wines you bring, maybe you do have some Walmart branded wines.
I'm not familiar with that. I've never had it in the store that I've worked at, so.
Yeah, so I did say that, absolutely.
Okay. The other thing is, we're part of the community. We have two-hundred-and-forty-plus employees that work here. They're from the Watertown community, so in surrounding communities. So I mean, you got to look at that, too. Yes, I appreciate Randy's job that he's doing, you know, bringing in another business, but that would put it to the Safe Youth Council. If they're wanting to hold Walmart and Target up from getting a liquor license, are they going to do the same for Dakota Butcher at their second location on the East Side? I guess that's all I have right now.
Okay, well, thank you, Darryl. I appreciate. How do you spell your last name? Did you say Craig?
Crandall, C-R-A-N-D-A-L-L.
Very good. Thanks, Darryl. Anybody else want to speak in favor of or against this?
I'm Jason Belrant. I think I'm in favor of it here. My thing is, I know a lot of businesses in town, very local, community owners and stuff like that, they say, you know, introducing new products into storage are going to take away business. What happens further down the road if we want to grow Watertown? I mean, you guys, population's been in Watertown steady for so long. You guys want to bring in a new business, or you want to introduce new products, it's going to take away from other businesses, right? I mean, no matter what you do, okay? I understand that. It's all about competition. I mean, don't get me wrong, like, I don't think none of these retailer stores are going to come in, and they're going to make a nine-hundred-foot display of alcohol beer. You know, they're not going to have lights shining on it. They're not going to have a famous rock star come in to sign autographs. I mean, they're just looking to potentially sell another product to help drive businesses, not only within our store, with the other stores, you know? And who's going to know? We might come in and a consumer, we might not have what they want. We'll kick them to the next store down the road. I mean, you know, more than likely, you're going to sit there and you're going to help your competitors out. We're not fighting each other, because it's a city, right? We're here to grow. We're here to help each other out. We're here to look to bring new businesses in. You guys talk about, you know, not bringing businesses into town and stuff like that, or you guys say, like Walmart, you know, he said he'd come, a lot of the business comes in right off the interstate. Well, if you think about it, everything that we're building, closer to the interstate, isn't it? New middle school, that's not even farther into town. So any tournaments that we have and stuff like that, they're going to one spot, and then they go right to their hotel, because it's convenience for the people coming into town, right? Looking at the new ice arena, if that gets built, where is that at? Close to the edge of town. So it's easy for people to come right off. So there's nothing that we're building to grow, to bring stuff into the other side of town for the other businesses and stuff like that. The city's growing out that way, towards the interstate. I hate to say it, you know? But I think it's, competition's great amongst all people. Do we want to take money away from these local businesses? You know, do they want to do that? No, they probably don't. But in all fairness, you know, we just want to be able to sell a product, or stores want to be able to sell a product to also meet the needs and demands of the consumers, you know, as they come into the community as well. So I think it's, I think it's a great thing. Talk about underage consumption and stuff like that. These stores haven't even have it in the retail stores yet. I don't know any of the facts of how many underagers were given out last year, stuff like that. But I mean, if kids want to get it, I was a kid once growing up, too. If I wanted something bad enough, I found a way to get it. It didn't matter, right? I'm sure your guys' kids are the same way. They'll sit there and pout, and they'll try to get whatever they want. My three-year-old does the same thing, okay, until I give in. Now, am I condoning underage drinking? No. But is there ways that we can help contain it? Yes, there is, you know? I mean, as a community, we can work hand-in-hand with each other. And I think that's what it's all about, is local businesses, corporation businesses, all that stuff coming together, you know? What can we do to help each other out to fight this, if it's allowed, into other retail establishments? You know, if they want to expand in other stores, too, so.
Okay, thanks.
Sir, are you representing--
I work for Target in town, too, so. But I'm just saying, you know, it's one of those things, like, you know, I'm not representing them, but I work there. But as a citizen of Watertown, though, I mean, I've lived in Aberdeen, I've lived in Minneapolis before. You know, somehow along the line, they're able to do it. How come Watertown can't effect those rules in, and how come we can't do it as well?
Okay, thanks, Jason.
Yep.
Anybody else?
Kaylee Jackson, Store Manager of the Walmart Store here in town. And I just kind of want to go along with what Target said. Our, you know, we just want to bring it in to be convenient for our customers, and we want to make the most convenient shopping experience that we can give our customers. So we want to bring it in for that aspect. Again, I just want to say that we are the only Walmart store in the state of South Dakota that does not carry beer and wine in the store. And then, third, I just want to kind of talk about what this gentleman talked about with our kids and our youth. I also have a teenage daughter, seventeen years old, and it worries me to, you know, have things like this around. But I also spoke with the Chief McPeak after the last meeting that we attended. And we're all about trying to mitigate that in the store. So if it would be better to have it locked up or up in our old subway or something like that, rather than in-line, we can definitely look at that, whatever, you know, whatever y'all think would be best for the community or best for the store or best for the youth. We're not opposed to that either. So we are for that work.
I'm Darryl Sawyer. I'm also with Walmart. I am probably the one person in the room that has had a Walmart store with a full liquor store. And I can kind of speak from experience on that. We had virtually no theft, because it was in an enclosed area. In fact, the part of town that we were in, I was in Casper, Wyoming, part of town that we were in was basically dying before we built the Walmart there. There was a mall right in the parking lot, in the far end of the parking lot, that every place business in that mall was up for sale and was closing. Within a year, every business in there, including a liquor store, was going full bore, that none of them left. Other businesses moved in. We were kind of opposite there, because we were on the side of town that nothing was happening. There wasn't another Walmart on the other side of town. And that's where everything was building up. But we kind of revitalized that in the town. There was other grocery stores that were closing. They stayed open. As far as the wines and that Mayor Steve was talking about, was Oak Leaf Wine, and that isn't brought in by Walmart. It's, they're the state of Wyoming, own all the liquor. And it has to be brought into a local establishment, or a local, the state had to approve it, and they brought it in, and then they would sell it to us. All of our vendor-type products come through local vendors. They don't come through Walmart. There will be certain times where there will be cross-docks, what we call cross-docks, that will come on a Walmart truck. But they are part of, like, for instance, if they're free to lay, they're part of free-to-lay. Free-to-lay gets the benefit of those. So we really didn't see any problems with theft or anything like that, especially being in an enclosed area. In fact, every liquor sting that we ever had, and there was many of them, we passed with flying colors. As far as theft goes also, it's the one area of our store that didn't ever have a shrink, which means it wasn't disappearing. And I, like Darryl, shop at all the local businesses, too. Dakota Butcher is one of my favorite places to go. So, you know, I feel that we should have a fair shot on the liquor business, just like anybody else. Any questions on how Walmart does things? Because I would be able to answer that, or if anything down the road, I'd be able to help you out.
Yeah, I think what we'll do, Darryl, is we will open it up still for some more conversation, and then if they have questions, we'll bring you back up. How's that sound?
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience that wants to speak in favor of or against this?
Hello. My name is Melanie Morrow, and I don't own a business, and I'm not with Walmart, and I'm not with Target, but I'm just a citizen. And I guess I would just say, I think it would be incredibly convenient to be able to buy a bottle of wine at the Target store when I'm in there, as opposed to having to stop my car, get my kids out, or leave my kids in, and go to a liquor store to buy a bottle of wine to take home for supper. When I first moved to town twenty-some years ago, my mother came to visit. She was shocked that you, she said, let's just go buy a bottle of wine. And I said, you can't get it in Watertown. I don't know where you get a bottle of wine. And I was shocked to find out that they were only at the liquor stores. I've lived in cities all over. I've lived in Arizona, Illinois, South Dakota. I've never been in a city where you couldn't buy wine or beer at a grocery store, at a store. So I would just say in favor of it. I think it would be a good thing.
Okay, well, thank you. Anybody else? If not, I'm getting ready to close the public hearing. Sure there's nobody else? Tim, did you want to say anything? No? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. I am going to look for the council to give me a motion in a second for discussion purposes. So I have a motion by Bruce, second by Beth, and now I will open the discussion. So anybody has any questions, now's your opportunity on the council.
Mayor, if I could just jump in, I have ownership interest in a business that has a liquor license. So due to that, I'd like to go on the record, I'm going to recuse myself from this, as well as items five, six, and seven for potential conflict of interest.
Okay, thanks, Don. You'll put that down, shall? So go ahead, guys, ladies. One of the questions I had, I think that, make sure I got the names right. Kaylee and Darryl, you mentioned that, maybe you can come up, because I do have a couple of questions for you. You mentioned that you folks would not be opposed to, like, where your subway shop is right now. I'm just using that as an example, to enclose that off, have a separate interest, have separate checkouts within that area. Am I correct in hearing that?
You are correct. We have some options that we can look at. I mean, we have an in-line option that would be right out in the aisles, such as the Brookings store, if any of you have shopped that store. And then we would have the subway up front that we could put it in there. We'd also have up in our front checkout, it's kind of where our tobacco is sold. We'd have magazines up there right now. We could block that off and get it in there as well. So we do have some different options that we can look at with our home office, depending on what is decided here tonight.
That was my main question. Have you guys got anything that you want to ask them while they're up there?
This is a Target issue, right?
But it's just kind of one of those, this is Target, yes, and we're going to focus back on Target. But you mentioned that, and I just wanted to make sure how that works, because I don't know if Target, if you would be willing to look at something of the same. Thank you, folks. I appreciate you being there.
That was my question, if we could talk to Target about--
So, Tim, if you could step back up and give us an idea if Target would be willing to do the same thing.
Sure, I would say with our current plans that we have right now, the section is so small that we'll be adding in. We have some different parts of the store we could section that off, but it would be kind of a temporary solution. We do have a remodel slotted, anticipated within the next year, where we would have that built into that remodel plan. But for what we're looking to establish right now from a merchandise standpoint, it's a pretty small scale, and would be kind of a temporary, still blocked off, but a temporary solution. And then that would be implemented in the new, in the new plan.
In the past, we have, for example, when Hyvee was here a few years ago, I think the option at that point was to have a separate entrance from the outside of the store, not one from inside the store. Is that correct? Does anybody recall that?
I do not recall that.
Seems like that's what, John, is that, so you couldn't have a separate entrance from, coming from within the store? You had to go out, come back in. The one question I have is, we have, I believe we've got gas stations, convenience stores that have casino, right, right attached to them, that has doorways that go through them. And so the one question I would have is, how does this differ from that? The other thing, I will say, that since this topic has come up, I have done a lot of talking to a lot of different people, a lot of them that I don't even know, but just ask. And I have gotten very large indication of either people don't, they really don't care one way or the other. But I have had a lot of people voice concerns with it, especially when it's down aisle three. I will tell you that that has been a big issue, that it's right out in the middle of the store, somewhere in the store, anywhere in the store. I've gotten a pretty significant feeling that people just aren't in tune with that. If there's a consideration, I think it should be a dedicated, isolated area. I really don't have a strong preference that you have to walk out of the building. That seems a little silly to me, quite frankly. But it does seem like, and I have been in a number of stores where they do have isolated areas, separate doors, it's all controlled. And, you know, so my thinking is, is if we move forward with this, that we move to something that is truly a dedicated area, and then we have the discussion on the access. But I don't personally, I don't feel that I've gotten a lot of support for it right out in the middle of the store publicly here.
Anybody else?
I would have a question for the city attorney, Justin. Is it, can we, can we, is there a way we can mandate that sort of thing with? Because, you know, we've got Target here today, and most likely Walmart, and others will follow if we--
Sure.
If we go this direction. Can we do that? Do we have a right to do that?
So in terms of establishing an ordinance that would say, create a separate space with walls, permanent walls, that create an enclosure, separate till, outside entrance or inside entrance? Is that kind of what you're positing here?
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, what I'm getting at.
Well, you know, in doing some research on the authority, the innate authority that the city council has, there is provision in statute where the city council can pass certain laws regarding alcohol that do not conflict with state law, but also sort of fill in some of the gaps. Now, you might have recalled at a work session here previously where I mentioned that, you know, creating these laws for licensing purposes, so setting out unique licensing requirements, can be problematic because of the discretionary act that is this hearing, where you sort of cut people off for licensing purposes. But that being said, there is state statute there that does allow for some expanded local authority. And let me see if I can pull that up here real quick. So we are talking about South Dakota codified law. Let me just get my email up here. Yeah, it's 929-7. Provides that each municipality may prohibit or regulate the transaction of business and alcohol beverages and the use of consumption of alcoholic beverages, establish the number of on- and off-sale licenses which may be issued and the fees to be charged for the licenses, and provide for reasonable classifications of on-sale and off-sale licenses consistent with the provisions of Title 35. Basically, what this language is saying is that you can adopt ordinances that regulate alcohol consistent with Title 35. And what the South Dakota Supreme Court has gone on to say, to describe that, is that so long as it doesn't conflict, that you would be able to adopt that. So in this circumstance, there isn't any provision that would explicitly conflict. We have statutes, for instance, that separate off certain portions of an on-sale establishment from a restaurant, depending upon the type of on-sale establishment. We have provisions in law that speak to barriers. Insofar as there would be a prohibition in state law, you know, I haven't seen any so far that would prohibit the erection, or an ordinance that requires the erection of permanent walls, separate entrance, things of that nature.
Wasn't that kind of a heated discussion when we-- Wasn't that kind of a heated discussion when we just had cases on North 81? You know, they wanted to add on, but yet we made them, if they wanted to do this, they could have that in that side, but it had to have a separate door, they had to have their own employees, just kind of like the cowboy does or anybody else. They have to have that separate cash register and everything. Was that not the case?
That was my recollection, was that that was one of the aspects that the city, was it the Plan Commission or the City Council, the Board of Adjustment, excuse me, yep, yep.
Justin, I've got a question, or actually a twofold question. Maybe you've answered the first part. We are, but I'll ask anyway again. We are within our rights as a city to reject this application, correct? I mean, we have legal grounds to do that.
That is correct. As I explained at the work session last time, the focus here is on the applicant and the location of the sale. So we already have the, I believe it was the Board of Adjustment, look at the physical location for zoning purposes. There's also a consideration about where the alcohol would then be located within. So there are multiple facets to location. There's also, like I said, the concern about the applicant. So on those grounds, you can approve or disapprove, is...
Okay. My second part of my question then is, if we were to approve this, have we now set a precedent that we'd be hard pressed to reject anyone else or any other establishment in somewhat of a similar situation?
The standard by which the circuit court would review an appeal from your decision, so somebody challenges it, who would go to the circuit court, the standard is arbitrary and capricious. So the question is, you know, would your decision appear to be arbitrary based upon decisions that, based upon the facts, based upon what you relied upon as a body to render your decision? It's a very generous standard for your decision making, but, you know, as I pointed out in that work session, there was a case where it was a colorable question whether a city council acted arbitrarily and capriciously by taking two licenses, one after the other before the body, and one being approved with very similar characteristics, and the other being disapproved, and the court was unable to discern what distinguished the two. So insofar as it comes to making your decision, you know, it's important to have the facts, to have the right facts. In terms of setting a precedent, you are acting in a quasi judicial capacity in approving a license. So as long as you aren't dealing with equal circumstances, you know, if there is a basis for distinguishing, then that can be sufficient.
But that would have to be quite clear, though, wouldn't it?
That is correct, Councilman.
I mean, let's just use the two people that have spoke out here. You've got Walmart and you've got Target. If we approve Target tonight in some manner, whatever those conditions are, I'm not sure how you would deny Walmart under those same conditions, because I would think consistency is something that should be expected of us, and something that we would expect of ourselves in making these decisions. So I would, I would say, yes, we are setting the precedence, and it's going to extend beyond Target and Walmart.
You know, having been a middle school principal for many, many years, I know how impressionable kids are, and I really wonder, when they get into a store, when they see either they're working there or whether they're just there, when they see a lot of adults picking, a lot, I mean, adults picking up alcohol, throwing it in with their basic needs, what that's going to tell those kids? And it seems to me, like Janelle alluded to it, and I think that Chief McPeak alluded to it, that it's just going to be more of the same thing that these kids are getting is that we're going down the slope where it's easier to, easier to do these things, it's easier to get involved in them, and I think that's, it just continues to be more dangerous all the time for our kids, and we know that it's hard for them now. The other part, I think Chief McPeak said about supervising, and, you know, that somebody goes in and buys beer or wine for you, goes out in the parking lot, and you've got a spacious parking lot at Target, you've got a spacious parking lot at Walmart, and it's easy to make that transition, and very difficult for the police to monitor it as opposed to at one of the local liquor stores where that is probably the only thing open at 10 o'clock or 9 o'clock at night. So it makes it more difficult for the police to monitor that kind of passing it on to others. Now, can they go down the block, down the street, two blocks, of course? So, but it does make it easier for them, and I think it's just, it's just giving them more and more, and I know, Kelly, we spoke many, many times, we had many, many sessions about how impressionable our kids are, and it would seem like, when you have it in a store and you see people picking up, it's just more for the kids to digest, and they're having trouble with it already, so.
I've got a question on hours of operation. Do we not have some restrictions on alcohol sales on hours? Walmart's open 24 hours.
Yeah, I would think that they would run the same hours that we have legally set for anything else. They'd have to have it closed up or...
Right, which gets down to, it's a lot easier to do that if it's in a designated space than it is if it's out in the middle. Now, somebody loads that case of beer or whatever, bottle of wine into the cart, and then they get to this desk, and, "Sorry, I can't sell that to you now because it's after the hours." It's a whole different thing when it's in a different spot. And I'll just make one comment to the one-stop shop comment is, that also, by being that type of business, there's obviously more minors that are going to that type of business. I would look at it, if it was in a different, in a separate location, and I don't agree that needs to be a separate exterior entrance, but it'd be like going into the mall, and if there was a liquor store, a separate liquor store within the mall, people couldn't come and go by that, but they're not going into, kids in that are not going into that. So I don't know how we would have breached the process, but I would be, I would be okay with the idea as long as it would be established in a separate space. Other than that, I'm going to have a problem with it.
You know, if we're going to vote on this tonight, we don't know what those parameters are. We don't have anything in place that says we want this, this, or that. We don't, we don't know that. So are we just going to say we need something enclosed? That can mean a lot of things, you know? So I think we got to think about that.
I think what you're after tonight now is, Target is looking for a liquor license. They want to sell beer and wine on an end cap. It's not an enclosed store or anything like that. That is what you guys are tasked with at this particular time.
I know, I've visited with, I'm kind of like Mike, I've visited with many, many people over the last couple of weeks over this. It's kind of mixed. I would say that, and not to put Tim on the line back there, but I've talked to a lot of his officers, kind of went past the higher rank, they would find that this would be very, very hard to enforce. I mean, they've already got enough things in their hands to do right now. You know, we've got a lot of problems on our streets nowadays, and we're just handing the police department a whole lot more to enforce, so I would be, and I think most of the people I've visited with were the same way. They would just soon see our police officers doing better things than trying to do stings on another, because this could open up a big can of worms. I mean, we could easily have another 30 places that are selling beer and wine, so.
I have one more question for...
The question then becomes, are we going to, if that's the feeling, Randy, and I understand where you're coming from, but, so are the next person that comes up and wants to open a liquor store, are we going to deny them? Or they want to open up, are we going to just put a cap on where alcohol can be sold in our community for the very reasons that you just described?
You got a point. But if we open this up, I know there's probably going to be another, and we've already turned down people on the same situation.
Mike, to answer your question, for me at least, if you had it in a different location and not in a grocery store, in a box store, where kids are, I mean, when you go to a liquor store, it's, there's an adult in there, 21-year-old or more, maybe two, but you don't have three kids working in there probably, and you don't have other things, so really it's, it's not the kids then that would be watching that.
I'm not talking about down aisle, an aisle or down an end cap, Dan. I'm talking about a separate, specific location for that at the store.
But I do believe, Justin, you may want to help me out on this, what we're looking at right now is having it on an end cap. If Target wanted to come back, if, let's just say they were denied tonight, if they wanted to come back and say, "We want to open up a specific enclosed area within the store," they'd have every right to come and ask us that again, am I correct? That would be a different look.
Does the actual request signify or designate...
It does not.
Where they, no, I think it's just asking for the license.
Yeah. This is basically asking for the state to issue the license. So it's how Watertown manages that, which he can answer to.
And specifically, it's approval or disapproval. It's not approval or denial. So that is conveyed then to the state, and they act accordingly.
But if we have, if we have convenience stores now that have either liquor stores next door, or they have casinos that are attached that have some off sale, wouldn't they have the ability, because it's a separate entrance, right? They'd have the ability to do that today, Randy, right?
Yeah, there is licensed establishments that do.
I just find it hard pressed to deny it if we put the conditions that we have used in the past, which seem reasonable, and that is to have an isolated area. And isolation, Ruth certainly is subject to some definition, but I'm not sure how we would deny that if it was a separate entrance in a separate location, and not where the minors are working and the minors have access to it.
I don't, I don't think that's a question tonight, though.
No, it's just a...
What's in front of us tonight is, allow Target to sell beer and wine off an end cap in her store.
No, it's not. The request is for a license, it's not to sell...
To sell beer and wine.
Does the, does the request...
Could we put the restrictions on it tonight?
Does the, does the request ask for it to be sold within the body of the store, meaning at an end cap? Is that a detail that's within it, or is it, it's not? It's to sell, we can put the conditions on it. We heard tonight from Tim that it's on an end cap, right?
Basically, the way the state looks at it is, it's going to go by the legal description. And I don't know, I don't know how to read legal descriptions, but I'm assuming this is the entire store, and so if this license is issued, they can put this in any part of the store, so...
It's actually the entire lot upon which Target's located.
Including the parking lot?
That is correct.
There you go.
Okay, they're going to sell it in a trailer outside.
So anywhere in this legal description, they can have that.
But we can put the conditions on it like we have previous requests. Is that correct?
Well, what you are sending to the state is what's on the face of this application. Now, in terms of enforcing that further, once Target comes up for, if you were to approve it, if Target came up for a renewal the next year and they did not comply with the terms that you had put in place to basically approve it on your end, you could potentially assert that as grounds for, for, well, it'd be disapproving the renewal.
So in Mike's case, so you could put the conditions onto it tonight.
And, and could we get a commitment that they would meet those commitments, or those requirements in order to...
Boy, I tell you, Mike, it's going to be really, really hard for us in the next two or three hours to bring that all together about what size...
We've done it with, we did it with Hy-Vee, folks. We really did.
I'm just saying that to bring that down on this, I don't know if we have the ability to get it. We can try. I don't care, you know, I'm open. I know Hy-Vee has their own separate spot.
I guess to clarify, Mayor, the way that the statute reads, STCL 35-2-1.2, provides that, "The governing body may approve or disapprove the application for a new retail license or the transfer of an existing license, depending on whether the governing board deems the applicant a suitable person to hold the license, and whether the governing board considers the proposed location suitable," end quote. So looking at what's in the application is one way of conceptualizing location, but given Target's plans, you have another idea of what location means to them. So if what they have provided you tonight, in terms of what they say is going to be their location within the store, is suitable or not, can be the grounds upon which you approve or disapprove the application.
Depending on the outcome of this, then, Justin, what, no matter which way it goes, what would be a next step for Target? Let's, let's just say it got denied. What would be a next step for them if they wanted to re-approach, or come back, or appeal, or, I don't underst, you know, I don't know if they come back and say, "Hey, we're going to apply for this, we were denied before, but now we have this new plan or whatever to do it," is, I'm just trying, because I don't think we can figure out what enclosed means or not tonight either. I know Mike does, but I don't know that I can wrap my head around what I would exactly tell them they had to meet as a requirement tonight.
Sure.
You know, so, so that's a question I have about, you know, what, what happens if we say no? You know, then they want to be able to enclose one and come back, how does that work?
So STCL 35-2-5.1 refers to that. "If the governing board of the municipality or county does not approve the application, the governing board shall endorse on the application the reasons for the denial and return the application and fee to the applicant. No further application may be received from the applicant until after the expiration of one year from the date of a denied application. However, if the application was denied based on the suitability of the location for the license, no further application may be received from the applicant until after the expiration of three months from the date of the denied application, only if the application is for a different location." So what this means is that, given the potential grounds for a location being a concern, it could be remedied within three months. The application could be brought back here.
Okay. I think we got to, we got to get moving on here. At this particular time, we do have a motion and a second on the floor for approval, and I'm going to ask for council action at this time. All those in favor say aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion is denied. Number five, "Application for a special retail malt beverage and wine license to Lake Area Zoological Society from 5:00 PM until 10:00 PM on Friday, June 23rd of 2017, at the Bramble Park Zoo." At this particular time, I will open the public hearing. If there's anybody who wants to speak in favor of or against this, this is your opportunity. Hearing none. I will, did you want to speak on this?
If I could, please.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name's Stan Lamb. I wasn't planning on speaking on this because I wasn't aware of it on the agenda, but I feel that for me to come here and speak against the previous matter, that I would have to speak against this one also. And the reason for that is, some of the comments that were made had to do with, with the youth and what, now, I'm not sure what the Zoological Society is going to do at this meeting, I assume, I don't know, but I'm assume, and you correct me if I'm wrong, I'm assuming there's, there's adults and children. I don't know if that's just adults.
No, this is just an adult function.
Okay. Okay. Well, that's, that's good. But with that in mind, we're teaching, whatever we do, we're teaching somebody something. And here, we're teaching the youth that see this, that we can't get together and have an enjoyable time for a good cause without having alcohol present. And that's the, that's the point that I have, is that we need to be able to get together without having alcohol, and promote a good cause for the sake of the cause, not because there's alcohol there. So I would encourage you to disapprove this particular thing. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Stan. Anybody else? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. I'm going to look for a motion and a second for discussion. Motion by Bruce, second by John, and I'll open the discussion with you guys. Any questions?
Looking at this and another one that's on this agenda, I cannot help but feel like I'm a hypocrite. Beyond that, I don't know what to say, because I sit there and... Beyond that, I don't know what to say, because I sit there and I look what we've, what we've just voted on and the reasons for it, and then, because it will benefit the Zoological Society to raise money, or the Chamber of Commerce to raise money, we're going to allow that. And that seems completely hypocritical.
No, Mike, if I could comment on either one of those, one, one is an adult function, it's not kids, and the other one is in a designated area, which we just said we would prefer them to do, and they do that, they have a designated area where they serve the beer at the, at the chamber function.
I would have to agree with-
So, there is, there is a distinct difference, and they're complying pretty much with what our thoughts are on this.
So, and it's a one-time event, not an ongoing sales of, of liquor? I do hope that, I guess, I don't know if I'm out of line saying this, I do hope Target comes back to us with something, but I believe that it's a one-time event, that we're not looking at approving something that sells liquor on an ongoing basis forever and ever, it's a one-time thing.
So, are we trying to justify it?
I'm, no, I'm feeling the same way you are, Mike, I'm just, just saying what the facts are in front of me on this.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, I am going to look for council action, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number six, application for a special retail malt beverage and wine license to the Watertown Area Chamber of Commerce from 5:00 PM on Friday, July 14th of 2017, until 7:00 PM on Saturday, June 15th of 2017, at Stoke Thomas Park. I do want to, before I open the public hearing, I wanted to have a comment. Justin, I wasn't sure if you were going to ditch me or what.
Yeah, where are you going, Justin?
That's not, you're hitting out of here.
Seeing as how things have went so far.
There was a, there was a constituent that asked about when the property was gifted to the city of Watertown, that there were, that there were rules and regulations put upon that, and I wanted you to address that first, if you would.
Sure, absolutely, Mayor, and this just is a welcome thing to have the community step up, members of the community, you know, and mention things that might have fallen through the cracks, or might be a concern that, you know, hadn't been foreseen or seen by folks in city government. There was a person in the community who recalled seeing an article in the Watertown Public Opinion, and from what I gather, it was sort of a retrospective of like, sort of, this day in X year, where there was a discussion about the land that was deeded for City Park coming with certain conditions, what we term in the legal profession, reversionary interests. Basically, if the land is conveyed with a reversionary interest, and that interest or stipulation on the deed isn't followed, so basically, I want to give this land to the city for X purpose, park purposes or what have you. If the city doesn't follow that, depending upon the language, the land interest reverts back to the party that donated it to the city, or sold it for that matter. Well, this inquiry forced me to do some title research, which is always interesting, and came across these three parcels, this is basically how the land that became Thomas Stokes Park was given over to the city. And as you can see, probably not terribly well there at the bottom, we have a color-coded system. The first parcel is the northernmost, the second was the orange color, the third, in time, was the green color. And I checked each one of those deeds, and there was nothing in the deeds, except on this first one, that constituted a reversionary interest. And that reversionary interest referred to trees being planted and cultivated for a public park. Interestingly enough, the, Mr. Thomas came back to the city council in 1909 complaining about the fact that the city had not yet planted trees on that parcel, and basically told them, hey, if you don't do that, I'm going to take it back. So, the city council obviously obliged them, and the rest is history. But that particular provision that, or that public opinion article referred to the fiscs, which would have been the 1922 transfer. And there, the public opinion article said that this land was conveyed on the condition that it would be used for park purposes, and no alcohol would be sold on the premises. Well, number one, for the purposes of tonight, I think it's fair to say that the alcohol is going to be sold in this area, is that correct? Number one, number two, I checked the deed, and like I said, there's no reversionary interest on the face of it. But also, more to the point, this deed was transferred in 1922, and as you all know, there was a certain amendment that lasted a certain period of time in our U.S. Constitution, that had something to say about alcohol use. So, the fact that, at that time, we had prohibition, and it would have been rather curious to have then a reversionary interest when that was thought to be the law of the land for the foreseeable future. So, anyways, I wanted to say thank you to the person in, you know, from the public who brought this concern to us. We did our due diligence and found that there was not any kind of reservation there, so.
Okay, thanks, Justin, I appreciate it. So, at this particular time, I will open the public hearing. Again, if there's anybody who wants to speak in favor of or against, this is your opportunity.
Good evening, Megan Olson with the Chamber of Commerce, and we are before you again, actually with two applications tonight. The first one, Cooking on Compeska, second one is Wine Walk. So, I would entertain any questions, this is standard operating procedure from, for us, same hours of operation, same drill as we go through each year with this annual event.
I think what I'll do, Megan, if there's nobody else that wants to speak in favor of or against it, I would, I would still allow them to come up now. If there's nobody else, then I will close the public hearing. So, I will close out at this particular time, I'm going to look for council, a motion and a second for discussion purposes. motion by Randy, second by Bruce, now, if you folks have questions for Megan, I would open that up.
Megan, I do have a quick question. How, how are you regulating this, just so, I know how you do it, but just so, I'm kind of like the way Mike feels tonight, too, so, I want to make sure that we're-
Sure.
We're relaying that information to the, to the community that this is-
Highly regulated instance.
The beer tent area is actually enclosed by high-tech orange snow fence, that's how we do it in South Dakota. And everybody that comes through, we actually have a WeCard program, and our volunteers are trained to read those IDs. We actually have an electric scanner now that goes through and makes sure that they're a legitimate ID, validates the age on there, everybody wears a wristband, and so they're actually checked twice before they're able to purchase anything.
What do you do to, I mean, they have to stay in that area to drink, or can they go outside that area?
We ask them, we recommend that they stay in that area, how the city ordinance reads is they can actually consume it anywhere within that park any other day of the year, and so, we put that up just to control the sale and consumption. We ask them to stay in that area, but that's sort of-
So, the same thing that was brought up earlier tonight about somebody going to the parking lot of Walmart or Target and having somebody walk in can happen.
With the caveat that any other day of the year, you can drink beer at City Park.
Yep.
So, that can happen whether it's during our event, or, you know, that's, that's the risk you run.
Like I say, I just want to make that public, so everybody's aware of the same situation, so.
Tim Toomey, could I ask you a question? We can't, we can't cover the fact that the kids are going to see that, okay? But from a police standpoint, what, what happens, so you can assure us, as best of your knowledge, that kids aren't allowed to drink, under 21 aren't allowed, I mean, it's bad enough maybe that they're seeing it, but secondly, do you have a lot of people out there to supervise that, or what, what is a real thing with helping to restrict younger kids in taking part?
We do have two officers assigned out there, also, the on-duty patrol officers will routinely walk through, drive through to monitor the situation, especially at night and during the band playing, we pay close attention to it.
Megan, do you hire any extra security?
We work with the police department, right. Another thing, too, we don't allow coolers into the event, and so, the beer has to be purchased within those confines, so we don't have this flow of people coming in and out and handing it out, really.
Any other questions for anybody? Hearing none, I will look for council action, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number seven, application for a special retail malt beverage and wine license to the Watertown Area Chamber of Commerce from 5:00 PM until 8:00 PM on Thursday, June 8th, 2017, for the Wine Walk event. At this time, I will open the public hearing again, if someone wants to speak in favor of or against this, this is your opportunity. Do you want to say anything else, Megan?
This is the second year we've done this event, to give you sort of an overview, each of the businesses downtown. I think we have 25 participating this year, between that five and eight time period, they can go in and actually sample. They're one-ounce samples, so it's a controlled pour, and they can go in, the idea is, yes, the wine is great getting people to come out, but really, it's to try to get folks into those downtown businesses and maybe experience inside those stores if they haven't had a chance to stop in, that's the real premise of the event, the wine is, is an added feature to that. But like I said, they're, they're one-ounce samples, and that's both wine and beer.
Okay, is there anybody else that wants to speak in favor of or against this, this is your opportunity. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, I'm going to look for a motion and a second for discussion. Motion by Mike, second by Glenn, any questions or comments to Megan on this one?
Megan, all-
Anything on our agenda tonight, didn't they have booze on it?
I could use a drink right now, actually. No. Megan, the, the consumption of this is occurring solely inside these businesses?
Yes, the consumption has to happen in the business.
Not out on the streets or anything else?
Nope, no, they have to consume it inside the businesses.
And you're doing the same thing you do with the Cooking on Compeska, there is the wristband.
Right, yep, they have to actually come, they get ID'd twice when they purchase their ticket, before they can even buy a ticket in advance, we ID them, we sell them their ticket, then when they come back that night to pick up their tasting glass, they actually get ID'd again.
Any other questions?
I have a question for Justin. Now, my question is, you know, they're, they're relating these to all kind of the same thing that we had with Target. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but these are on-sale wine and malt, not off?
That's correct.
Okay, so there is a difference.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action, all those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Megan. Number eight, second reading of ordinance number 17-23, amending zoning district boundaries by rezoning a portion of River Ridge Estates addition from A1 Agriculture District to R1 Single Family Residential District. At this time, I will open the public hearing, if there's anyone who wants to speak in favor of or against this, this is your opportunity. I thought you were all getting up to talk about this one. Yeah, what's the, what's the deal?
There's no more booze on the agenda.
Yeah. What's with that? So, if there's no one here to speak in favor of or against this, I will close the public hearing, I'm going to look for a motion and a second for discussion, then we'll turn it over to Shane. Motion by Mike, second by Dan, Shane, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, engineers must be boring. So, anyway, we'll get back to the normal part of the meeting, I guess. City staff did receive a petition from Greg Hoffteiser, acting agent for High Plains Development Corporation. This is essentially the next addition to River Ridge Estates. If my screen is up on the, I think, where is feedback? The area hatched in red stripes is the area to be rezoned. It was a part of the larger gray agricultural zone previously, and to the south is R1, and the request is to rezone it from Ag to R1, which is consistent with the development, so. With that, I'll leave it for any questions.
Okay, Shane, nobody's paying attention with you, you want to do that over again? No.
Shane, I would just say that-
It's okay.
Shane, I would just say that as a reminder that when we went through that in the plan commission, that the park is taken care of, and, I mean, they really have done a pretty decent job of getting that property prepared to be used for the Hoffteiser addition up there.
That's correct, that is a separate portion of the process, but we, we have negotiated the park dedication for the entire subdivision when it's ultimately planned out. So, with that, that will be a subsequent annexation of the city and plating procedure for getting that park-
Shane, could you please briefly just discuss one time again what the park dedication entails?
Okay, so, the park dedication by ordinance requires a subdivision to, or, or developers to dedicate 5% of their land, in land, or an equivalent value of money, which is awful, awfully difficult to come up with a dollar figure consistently, but-
I get the policy part, but what are we doing, what are we-
Okay, okay, so this isn't the complete up-to-date plan, but there's an 8.6 acre park that's being planned to dedicate to the city on the north edge along the future 26th Street.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for Shane? Hearing none, I will look for council action, all those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion carried, thank you, Shane. Number nine, ordinance number 1718, amending section 19.0403, other revised ordinance of the city of Watertown requiring parallel and diagonal parking on certain downtown streets. At this time, or I'm sorry, this is a second reading, and I will look for a motion and a second for further discussion. Motion by Bruce, second by Don. Justin, you want to handle this?
Absolutely, Mayor, thank you. These are a series of ordinances you'll see going down the agenda that relate to parking, and really what they are meant to be is sort of a housekeeping as well as a sort of public-facing change. This first ordinance relates to parking spaces in the uptown area. Currently, we have an ordinance, these various streets denoted as being four diagonal, four what is essentially parallel, even though they describe it as tandem, in this ordinance. What this change does is, it basically gets rid of those provisions and goes with what we already have in ordinance as the authority for the city to mark parking spaces, be they diagonal or parallel, or if they aren't marked, they are simply parallel. The thought being that this layout described here in ordinance is quite antiquated, and to make the changes to reflect existing parking spaces, we would have to go in and make changes every single time the request from business owners to change a parking orientation is made. So, instead, we'll just go with the existing authority that allows the city to mark the spaces, because quite frankly, I think it's fair to say, folks aren't looking to ordinance to see how to park, they're looking at what the lines on the street say, or point to.
Any questions for, for Justin on this, I know we've gone through this numerous times. If not, I'll look for council action, all those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Number 10, ordinance number 17-21, amending section 19.0401 and repealing section 19.0413 of the revised ordinance of the city of Watertown to clarify the definition of parallel parking. This, again, is second reading, I will look for a motion and a second for discussion. Motion by Randy, second by Dan. Go ahead, Justin.
More parking, Mayor, the first provision there defines parallel parking in our ordinances and applies in a number of areas elsewhere in our ordinances. The problem with that parallel parking definition was that it read three feet of the front door or rear of any other vehicle, basically, anything closer than that would not constitute parallel parking. The problem, of course, being that three feet from the front door of any vehicle would if put, you know, parallel or perpendicular to the vehicle, would have it on top of the vehicle. If next to the vehicle, it wouldn't make any sense either, that would not be parallel parking. So, this is just clarified to make it three feet of the front or rear of any vehicle, meaning three feet space between the front and rear would be our parallel parking definition. The second part gets rid of the tandem parking definition, made reference to that in the prior ordinance. The tandem parking definition there is basically a large-gapped, parallel parking definition. Eight feet is how it's defined in ordinance. Of course, as I mentioned before, tandem parking as, as a common definition does not match this one. The internationally recognized definition of tandem parking is when you have two vehicles in essentially one parking spot, one vehicle has to move for the other to get out. That's essentially what tandem parking is defined as, so, that suggests those be eliminated for clarity purposes.
Okay, any questions for Justin on this one? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Turning the page. Number eleven, first reading of ordinance number seventeen dash twenty-two, amending section eighteen point zero one zero one and twenty-one point six five zero one to exempt contractor trailers, shipping trailers, and moving trailers from certain parking provisions. Justin, you want to fill us in what's going on?
Certainly, Mayor. This provision came before the Plan Commission before coming here because of that second part involving zoning ordinance, section twenty-one sixty-five oh one. But the reason why these provisions are put together is because they really do relate to one another and deal with something of an incongruity that exists between our police power authority to regulate and our zoning authority. But yet both have to deal with parking in certain ways. The first provision here, eighteen oh one oh one, is modified to reflect what exists essentially in twenty-one sixty-five oh one, which is to say that there are exceptions for vehicles, or there are prohibitions on parking for vehicles over one ton, but there is an exception for vehicles that are larger that unload personal merchandise and the personal property of an abutting resident. The thought there being that if it's okay for, say, UPS or USPS to unload, then for temporary period of time, then the large vehicles that folks move into and out of houses with should also receive some similar treatment. But the idea then too is that regardless of the trailer, how long it's there for, it does not pose a threat to public safety wherever it is parked, so there's always that safety valve. The other provision that we included in here derived from a conversation that Ken Buchholz had with this body here a month ago in a work session, where he mentioned that it's been an administrative practice of the city to not pursue contractors working at sites that would otherwise be violating the plain language of this law. So in subpart two, there is now actual black letter stating this policy as opposed to just the administrative internal policy of enforcing that provision. As for twenty-one sixty-five oh one, really here, what's being removed is the one provision, subpart ten, that deals with on-street parking. On-street parking is definitely, is generally under the city's police power authority to regulate, not its zoning authority. Zoning authority would relate to off-street parking, which is what a majority of this provision is. So that has effectively been removed there and taken up into eighteen point oh one oh one. Finally, there is, again, the provision for off-street parking relative to commercial vehicles and trailers used by contractors actively performing improvements to the property. So that same protection for on-street parking would then also apply under zoning for off-street.
Not a question on this, but where are we at? And maybe it's not a fair question to ask you, Justin, on our late parking ordinance that was going to come before us?
That's a fair question, Councilman. I have an answer for you. May 25th, that provision is going before the Plan Commission, because that is entirely within zoning ordinance, and so they'd get the first crack.
Any other questions for Justin on this? Hearing none, I'll move forward. Number twelve, a resolution transferring City of Water real property corresponding to a portion of the Old Watertown Rec Center to the Watertown School District fourteen four. There are supporting documents that came with this. What I'll do, Justin, is I'm going to look for a motion and a second for discussion. Motion by Beth, second by Mike. And Justin, I'll let you start this up.
Thank you, Mayor. I had to make the move over here because I wanted to provide the legal description that goes in where that highlighted portion exists on your drafts. Make sure that the public sees it as well. Find that here real quick. It was through the hard work of Roger Swin and the folks with their engineering department. They worked very diligently to try to come up with a legal description. And as you can see by, I believe it is exhibit A, page three, there's quite the milieu of different lots, and if you dig into the ownership there of the whole school complex there with the former rec center, with the Boys and Girls Club, you'll find that the ownership interests are complex, to put it nicely. So what this resolution attempts to do is, as pointed out in the first whereas clause there pursuant to SDCL six dash five dash one dash two dash five, to convey gratuitously certain interests of the city in property within the school complex. Specifically, we have the aerial view here, what we're talking about is essentially everything in that red portion. What that comes out to be is nearly all of Arena Lot One, except for five feet that goes into Arena Lot One approximately in this location, and I'll give you a better breakdown of that. Our one-half interest that we share, we have undivided one-half interests, the school and the city, in Lot A here, and then this portion of Lot B, which the city owns entirely. So the city owns Arena Lot One entirely, Lot B entirely, and one-half of Lot A. But everything in the red is what would be conveyed by this resolution to the school district. What remains outside here in the northern portion, which is more, well, more clearly described up here, is what the Boys and Girls Club plans on having as their piece of the property. It would include their expansion plans as well as parking for their facilities use. So the way the resolution reads is twofold. State law provides for the gratuitous transfers of property between political subdivisions like the municipality and the school district, just based upon resolution, so long as there are certain findings as laid out in the whereas clause, the public purpose finding, the fact that the city has no, you know, it's no longer necessary for the public purpose and use for which it was acquired by the city, and as specified in about the fifth whereas clause down, that purpose was hosting city-sponsored recreation and wellness activities. So that's the resolution component. There is an exhibit B requirement that the school district sign and waiver and indemnification of the city in transferring that land, that they then protect us, hold us harmless from liability that might arise subsequent to the transfer. So that's a real broad-brush treatment of this. The reason why we had Roger go out and acted so aggressively is because of the timeframe that the school district has for its refurbishing its portion. We've been in contact with the school district, have meetings with the school district and the Boys and Girls Club, and this appears to all parties to be the acceptable breakdown. The idea ultimately, from what I've been told, has been that the city would extricate itself from all ownership interests within that entire block, within that entire complex.
Okay, any questions for Justin on this?
The area that's showing up there right now, though, is in part co-owned as well, right? There's a, our goal is to get that cleaned up also, and then long-term, whatever long-term's defined as, is to eventually get, hopefully get it turned over to ownership to the, so it's taken the red part you had, getting our ownership out of there.
Yep.
Getting full ownership of the area you just had up there in the city's part, and then eventually our goal would be to turn that over then to the Boys and Girls.
That's right, and I have the good word of the school district's representatives that, you know, that's their intention as well, that we collaborate to get this parcel deeded to the Boys and Girls Club. And as a part of that process, that will require most likely a replat, and that can be performed on this particular property. Because as I pointed out, we have three lots there, varying interests in terms of ownership, so it'd be good to clean up.
Justin, on that note, does the Boys and Girls Club constitute or equate to a gratuitous entity like they would?
That is a great question, Councilman. That is absolutely correct. Yeah, SDCL chapter... Yeah. SDCL chapter six dash five not only refers to transfers of property between political subdivisions and between, but it also refers to political subdivisions and nonprofit organizations. There are slightly different provisions, but it's really pretty much substantively the same. There's one section that applies differently.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Number thirteen, consideration of implementation of the library content filter system in the amount not to exceed $8,300. This time, I will look for a motion and a second. We should address where the dollars are coming from, whether you are going to ask the library board to use this out of the library fund, or if the council is looking at using some contingency funds or out of our general fund to fund this for the first year. And then the second and forthcoming years, we will actually be able to budget those dollars, which are about $2,400, $2,500 per year for the library. So that's what I'm looking for. Somebody want to make that motion? So the motion is made by Bruce, which, what are you asking?
Sorry, I'm sorry. I haven't done this long enough.
You want to make the motion to approve, but you want the dollars to come from either contingency, the general or the library fund?
I would say we should look at the library fund to start with.
Okay.
And that's consistent with what I would second.
Okay, so I have the motion on the floor from Bruce that we approve this with the contingency, that the dollars come from the library fund, and that is seconded by Beth. So I'm going to open it up for questions now.
I want to make sure, because I can't quite recall what funds we'll have. Is this the library fines fund we're talking about?
That is correct.
Okay.
But this seems like an appropriate use for that money, but we cannot require that of them, we can only request that, correct?
That is correct. The library board will have to act on this and see if they want to actually approve the expenditure of not more than $8,300 out of their library fine fund.
And if it does not get approved there, then it doesn't go through unless something comes back to us.
That's correct. It'll have to come back to you for a different funding source.
But Steve, where are we at with the $2,400 maintenance fund? Where are we going for that? Would that be an ongoing city budget item?
That would be an ongoing city budget, which would incur in the year 2018 and beyond.
But that would be in the library's budget?
That's correct.
Yes.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Number fourteen, authorization for the mayor to sign an easement, allowing limited city access to a portion of private property adjacent to the concession stand located immediately southwest of Stoke Thomas Lake City Park. This time, I'll look for a motion and a second, and then we'll let Justin explain what's going on here. Motion by Bruce, second by Glenn. Justin, if you want to take this?
Thank you, Mayor. So many of you might recall this concession stand, those of you who have had a great deal of history in Watertown. It's something of an institution, from what I've been told. I've obviously not been around long enough to be able to appreciate it. But this concession stand exists on the southern periphery of Thomas Stokes Park, and I'm trying to pull it up maps, on Google Maps here. Actually, we have GIS, might as well use that. Let's see here. Okay, here we are, right next to Casino Speedway. Now, if you bend down the curve, you've seen this concession stand. It has a few bollards out in front. It's 40 feet long by about 20 feet wide. And what this GIS depicts here is the lot line that exists. Now, going back and looking through title research, I came to find that this concession stand did indeed get conveyed with this parcel of land for quite some time. Now, it just so happened that this space in here was dedicated to the city as right-of-way, and be Road Outlet B on your document there. Based upon our surveys, the concession stand is fully within Road Outlet B, but at the same time, because this concession stand had been deeded for years to the, to the, well, with this particular parcel, the thought was to quitclaim any and all interest in this parcel to make sure that we owned it entirely. I mean, not just, you know, insofar as it's within the right-of-way, but that we can, had all ownership interests in it such that we could, as the city, do with it as we so chose, have it rented out, have it renovated, have it taken down. I mean, there are multiple options here. But the landowner next door here was very agreeable. In order, though, to accomplish either of those ends, the thought was that there needed to be an easement. This line doesn't show accurately, but it effectively is put right at, right under the awning, just to the north and west of this building. So we asked for a 10-foot easement along this property owner's line, and that would allow us temporary access to renovate that property, or in the case of needing to take it down, it would allow us the ability to temporarily place building materials there to then get it removed when we have a truck available. So that is a short summary of what we have here, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
So do we have a plan to get rid of it? Is that what we're doing? I mean...
I think what I'll do here is I will get a motion and a second. Do I have it already? Well, Justin and I were out there today, and this thing is going to need a lot of work. I know that the whole, up in the meetings that we've had, is that, you know, you can kind of bring that nostalgic thing back, and you can have ice cream sales there, and you can see it a better picture on the, on the screen. It needs a lot of work. We could not get inside, it was locked up. They are conveying that to the city. If we do look at that and say, this is in too tough a shape, we could just take it down and get rid of it. We do have the other house in City Park that would make probably a better area for, to sell pop and candy and things like that, that is no longer being used. So I think once we get this conveyed, I think at that particular time, we'll have Keith, our building service guy, take a look at it and see if it's worth the time. It looks like it needs new shingles, it needs a whole lot of work, you guys.
It really wouldn't be a safe location. You'd never allow it to be built there. I'm not sure why we'd retain it, because...
There are, to go off of what Councilman Danforth pointed out, there are certainly liability concerns with regard to having it in the right-of-way. That being said, there aren't too many more liability concerns than what essentially exists right now, with it being in the right-of-way and with us not, you know, as the city going in and taking care of it. So this, right now, this transaction doesn't really improve our liability situation too much, but it does clear out the way for us to either do what we want with it or...
Yeah, and I think, guys, in my 60 years here in Watertown, I think I've only seen a couple of cars go through it, so, you know, I believe we've had that. So I think we get it, then we'll take a look at it and see where we go from that point. How's that sound? So at this time, I will look for council action. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Number fifteen, consideration of bids received for the Watertown Storm Shelter Project. I'm going to look, Shane, I'm going to get a motion and a second for approval on this, and then we're going to have some discussion on it. So I'll look for that. I have a motion by Randy and a second by Bruce. Shane, if you want to work on this for us, you go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. We did receive bids on May four. Four bids were received for the Watertown Storm Shelter Project. As you can see on the screen, and where my pool cue is pointing, is approximately the location of the storm shelter. And that location for the greater area is adjacent to the Anza Soccer Complex along Seventeenth Street Southeast. The intention is that the storm shelter would function as shelter for both the soccer complex, the softball complex, and the surrounding neighborhood. Primarily, the trailer court to the north would be a primary concern for those folks that would want to seek shelter during a storm event. This would be available to them. Our project estimate was $224,500. The low bid submitted by Gray Construction of Watertown was $246,800. The building size is approximately 1,200 square feet. And with that, I guess I'll go into a little bit of detail. We're over budget by approximately $22,000. We're over budget by approximately twenty-two thousand dollars. If we award this bid as accepted, we would have to find additional funding. We do have a hundred and sixty-eight thousand four hundred approximately in FEMA grant funding, which would leave the remaining portion of the city to be seventy-eight thousand four hundred dollars. The, there is some room visiting with the architect to maybe reduce the cost of this facility. We went into it with some pretty high-tech locking mechanisms and some other variances, and they estimate that we could potentially, now, the key word is potentially, reduce the cost by up to twenty thousand dollars. That still puts us a little bit short from our budget, you know, by two thousand or so, but the recommendation is to award and then negotiate the price down, but we would have to recognize that we'll have to come up with additional funding somehow. Now, why would this be different, handled differently than the skate park, which we just requested to rebid, because it only had, it also exceeded the budget? The primary differences are here is we did get four competitive bids, so we weren't just isolated with one bid. And the other thing is, is that the remedy to the skate park was to do in-kind work with other city forces. So, essentially, we reduced the scope of the project on the skate park. Here, we wouldn't really reduce the scope, but we would change, say, the style of the lock, you know, maybe the durability of a doorway, or, in this case, we're recommending that we reduce or eliminate the benches that we're gonna put in there. So, there's items that we can strip out of this thing that don't change the scope of the intended building, yet reduce the cost of the project. That's why it's being viewed differently than the skate park. We did get competitive bids, and we do have the ability to cheapen the project up by accepting some different products within it. So, with that, any questions?
What is the square foot cost on a building like this? It seems like it's just outrageous for a small building like this, that's gonna cost you two hundred and seventy thousand dollars or so.
Well, it is pretty expensive per square foot. The key difference is this has got reinforcement in the walls to withstand an F-four tornado, which, you know, quite frankly, virtually no structures are built to that standard within this part of the world. I mean, there's storm rooms within buildings that withstand it, but by far not the whole entire structure is usually built to the standard. So, that greatly increases the cost. These blocks are gonna be filled with concrete and rebar to hold the walls upright. It does have a high-strength roof system on it, so that nothing can penetrate the roof as well during the storm. So, it is unique, and it is a costly type of construction.
My first observation on this is, when this started, became discussion with us, I don't know, probably what, a year, two years ago initially, it seems like this thing has grown, not necessarily in its size, but in the grandeur of it, so to speak. Do we have any of the pictures of it that were shown to us a few weeks ago?
I don't have them.
It seems like we got, let's keep this in the perspective as to what it is, it's a storm shelter. It looked very, very nice to me, but it looked overdone to me. It looked like an architect had some extra time on their hands and put extra money into it. That's just my opinion. It seemed like we started off with a storm shelter, and now we've got some architectural piece that is a storm shelter.
So, we did have some add alternates in there, Councilman, that's part of the enhancement. We did have a wall inside it that we had as an add alternate to potentially separate it into two sections if we wanted to. That I would not recommend award for. And then we also had an add alternate to do the more expensive, finished-looking burnished block. We would just be going back to the basic construction materials if we just awarded the base bid. So, the rendering that you remember seeing would be with the burnished block and a few of the other amenities that wouldn't be in the base bid. But, with that said, I mean, it is expensive, but it's a unique-use building, intended to withstand the brunt of a severe storm. Now...
And it is being paid for by, how much percentage FEMA dollars? About seventy-five is...
About a hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
That's about seventy-five percent, yeah.
Yeah. Now, one thing, if we would've known that the building came in at two fifty, that may have changed how we applied for our FEMA grant, and maybe we would've got some more money, but we went with the best information that we had when we put the grant together, and one sixty-eight's what the result was.
Yeah, this is about a two, two-and-a-half-year-old project when we first originally started looking at applying for the grant, so...
Any questions from the council? Because it seems like, you know, we're building this not just for the ball diamonds or the soccer diamonds or anything like that. We're really building this over there for the, for the, all the homes that are in that southeast part of town. You know, they are susceptible to storms, they're all in trailer homes, they're very susceptible to them, I would say, so I'm looking for any kind of answers or questions.
Shane, question for you. The hundred and sixty-eight K, the grant, what's the timing on that?
We already have a green light to spend money, and we do have, I guess in all open and fairness, the, this budget here only addresses the physical building of the structure. There's still fees for the architect's fee, and, you know, the geotechnical services would also be in addition. So, there are some additional funds besides the two forty-six that we have to identify as associated with this project. I believe the architectural funds, if I, I believe it was around six thousand dollars, I don't remember what the exact number was, and the geotechnical was another twelve, twelve hundred to fifteen hundred or something like that. But overall, I guess, this isn't gonna be an inexpensive building to build.
But the question is, if we don't build it when we kind of currently plan to, is the grant in jeopardy?
Yes, we would lose the grant if we don't spend the money. And I guess, you know, the real question is, do we want it? Do we have a budget for it? And will it serve its purpose? And I think the purpose answer's an easy one. I mean, it's gonna be the safest place in that part of the community to go seek shelter. I, I'll tell a little personal story. When I first moved to town, one of the first few weekends that I was here, we had a softball meet at the Cook Complex. Some people from Marshall that knew my daughter were at that, and that's when that storm sirens went off, and I think cooking on Kepeska might've been going on or something like, that was that day. And those people, in a panic, called our house to find out if they had a place to go seek shelter. And they drove and they spent that storm time at my house, because they didn't know where else to go. And so, that's what the purpose of these type of facilities are, is to give people a place to go when they need to. So, that's my personal story on storm, and being able to seek shelter, I guess.
So, if we approve this, we're really proving it as quoted, with the hope of having some kind of reduction.
Yeah, I think there will be reduction. If you take a look at the lock system rather than what we were looking at, there'd be different lock system on it. Go ahead and give us an idea of what you think.
Right. For instance, we did a, we talked about many lock mechanisms. We talked about a remote one that they could activate from the police department or fire department. We talked about a key fob where everybody that has a key to open the police department would also have the same key fob to open this facility. So, we've looked at the whole genre of lock mechanisms. The estimated one was about seventy-five hundred bucks. If we just take that down to a simple deadbolt, I mean, we're gonna be down to a hundred bucks. So, there's savings that we can find in something like that, there's savings that we can find in some of the signage, there's savings to find if we pull out the benches inside the thing. And really, what would we do? We would probably fundraise in the future and put some of those features back in as needed, but there are approximately twenty thousand dollars of refinements that we could do to the hardware here, and maybe get this a little more palatable, but either way, you're gonna find yourself a little bit in want of some funds.
Shane, I know we had originally, I think there was planned for two bathrooms in this facility.
There still are.
Could we, if we have to have that, can we just have, like, I don't know how much money that'd save, but a unisex bathroom?
Well, that's...
I mean, it's not like everybody's gonna be in there for hours and hours, you know, probably.
The caveat to federal money is federal rules, and they said that we had to have bathroom facilities in there.
But you have to have two.
Correct.
Shane, I don't, you know, I don't want to take a grant just because it's there. In the end, it's all our money, right? Maybe it's city-state, local, federal, but there is a sense of urgency with that. The question I would ask is, if you rebid this, do you think the bids would come in lower?
I do not.
I think that's a fair question, Don, and you answered that with, "You do not." Okay. Any other questions for Shane on this?
So, what do we approve, if we think it's gonna be less, are we gonna approve not to exceed number? Are we gonna approve this and just budget for the fact that we're gonna take another bigger chunk out of something else?
What I'm asking for is approval of the bid, the base bid, as-is, and then, once that's approved, staff will go to work with the low bidder and try to reduce the overall cost of the structure.
Do we have to designate, though, where the additional money's coming from as part of the...
Yeah, yes, and I don't know what fund that would be, so I didn't put that in the motion.
The entire project is coming out of the second penny, sales tax, and then we had allotted for, on the revenue side, for the grant coming in. So, any overages would come out of that existing unallocated fund balance.
Any other questions? Okay, I will look for council action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number sixteen, consideration of bids received for the asphalt-concrete maintenance project. I will look for a motion in a second, and then we'll turn it over to Shane. Motion by Bill, seconded by Dan. Shane, you go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Again, on May fourth, we opened bids for the asphalt-concrete maintenance work. Six bids were received for various items. We had three schedules. Schedule A was the seal coat. Schedule B was a mill and overlay project, and Schedule C was the crack sealing. We did receive multiple bids on the crack sealing and the chip seal, but only a single bid on the mill and overlay. Staff has reviewed the bids and found that they all are within our budget parameters that we expected, so with that, I would request them, do you want to do these one at a time?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, the first one would be Schedule A, seal coat. Our staff recommendation is to award the contract to Project seventeen fourteen, Schedule A, to the Road Guy Construction Company in the amount of one hundred and sixteen thousand thirty-seven dollars.
Okay, so do I need to amend this motion, Bill, that you have out there, that is for the Schedule A?
Yeah, I guess what I thought, we were dealing with it as a group, so yeah, amend that, my motion to be just for...
Just for clarity, for clarity, the reason I'm electing to do them separately is because we have to send the individual contract to different companies.
Yeah, this is the way to do it. So, I have a amended motion by Bill to approve Schedule A, and I have a second by Dan. Any other questions?
Just point of clarification, Shane, the middle one, the Schedule B, actually came in over budget, but aggregately for the three, they are at or below budget?
We had, I believe, fifty or sixty thousand left in our mill and overlay budget in reserve to be able to, in case something got added or needed adjustment during the project. So, we have enough budget.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. So, the second part of this on Schedule B, I'll look for a motion in a second for approval of Schedule B. I have a motion by Bruce, and seconded by Beth. Shane, if you want to go on that.
Okay, so the Schedule B mill and overlay work was, bid was submitted by Dunick Incorporated in the amount of nine hundred and ninety-four thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-five cents, and again, that is within our budget for that portion of the project.
Question, Shane, that this is essentially the map that you had laid out to us, or that was presented at the public sessions at the library here recently?
Correct. I tried not to miss any of the streets, but primarily, the streets include Fourteenth Avenue Northeast from Highway eighty-one to Nineteenth Street. We do get to skip over the portion that was improved with the roundabout project. Then it includes Tenth Avenue Northeast from Highway eighty-one to Eleventh Street Northeast. Then there is the portion downtown, First Avenue South, from Fourth Street West to Highway eighty-one. Then, another segment is out at the Airport Road from Highway twenty all the way back to the airport terminal. And then, the entire remaining portion of Summerwood Edition is scheduled for paving out by the lake. And those are relatively small areas individually, but collectively, they encompass the entire budget.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, we'll move over to Schedule C. What I'll look for is a motion in a second to approve Schedule C. Motion by John, seconded by Don. Go ahead, Shane.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Schedule C for crack sealing is being awarded to Highway Improvements Incorporated in the amount of two hundred and fourteen thousand, if so approved. That work is in conjunction with the seal coat as far as the area, so some of that crack sealing will be done in advance of the chip seal. And just for record, I didn't tell you where the chip seal focus was this year. It is on the south bypass between Highway eighty-one all the way back around to the north, where our Twenty-Ninth Street project will end. And then it also includes Pheasant Ridge over on the east side of the interstate.
Any questions for Shane on this? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number seventeen, consideration of bids received for the Twenty-Ninth Street Southeast Reconstruction Project. I'll look for a motion in a second for discussion. Motion by Randy, seconded by Beth. Shane, if you'll take this.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna bring up the drawing here. So, the top portion, I know it's hard to see on the screen, but I'll zoom in a little bit. Okay, so, Twenty-Ninth Street, the proposed project improves the project from Highway two-twelve south to the back lot line of Walmart, which is just beyond Thirteenth Avenue South to the east.
I think Spencer's working frantically.
Oh, sorry, technology. Anyway, so, we did receive bids. I'll back up a little bit, and then we'll do the introduction. May fourth, we received eight bids for this project. That is a tremendous amount of interest on this project. We did receive two asphalt bids and six concrete bids. The, back to the description then, Highway two-twelve, this is south to, just below, south of Thirteenth Avenue South is the intended project, which is indicated in blue shading on the screen. We did bid alternate sections. We bid an asphalt section, which was six inches of asphalt pavement, and we bid another concrete section that was seven inches of concrete pavement. And, like I said, this brought a great deal of interest to this project. We got very good bids on both sides of the alternates, and so with that, I did reach out... And so with that, I did reach out to Clark Engineering and had them help me crunch the data and come up with a life cycle cost analysis to some extent. We didn't go into a huge intricate review, but kind of kept it a little bit on the simple side. But the result was the same, that if you choose asphalt or you choose concrete, the per-year life expectancy dollars are pretty darn close. I mean, literally within, if the asphalt pavement lasted 25 years and the concrete pavement lasted 30 years, they're almost identical. I don't expect the asphalt to last 25 years. I'm expecting it about to make 20 years if we do a mill and overlay somewhere in its life cycle. So they aren't apples to apples, but they are pretty close. It's apples to apple sauce if I have to make a stab at it. But they are really close overall. If you did, just to kind of put it in perspective, the bottom line is, over a 60-year span, we would think that we would have to replace the asphalt pavement three times. We would have to replace the concrete pavement twice. Now, both asphalt and concrete are going to require some maintenance work throughout the life of the pavements. So with that, I don't have a strong recommendation for the council. I can accept either the asphalt bid or the concrete bid, and I'll leave it to your discretion to decide how we bid or award. I will state that either option, I have more than adequate budget to cover the costs.
Shane, how old is this section of road right now? I mean, how long has Walmart been there?
It's not very old. It's built in 2004, so it's around 12 to 13 years old. Admittedly, the section that it was built out of was not intended to handle the traffic that it's seeing today. That's why it fell apart sooner. It was a four-inch asphalt or 11-inch gravel base. And four inches of asphalt would not be used on a truck bypass.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to say. It wasn't originally planned for a bypass road, so. Just a question, Shane, and I guess it really doesn't, well, I guess it does have a lot to do with the bid. What are they going to do with the island?
Islands will remain the same.
And the same covering on the island?
Yeah, the, we aren't doing, we're leaving all the curb and gutter on the project and the islands as is. There aren't, all we're replacing is the base, we're redoing the base work and replacing the surface.
Is the, it seems like when the concrete goes, it just, it seems problematic in regards to the ability to work it, rework it, so to speak, versus a grind. Is that true or not true?
Well.
I've seen some other areas where when the road goes bad, it's like.
So, history shows that city staff, and we've been blessed with having an asphalt contractor in town, that it's easier for us to maintain an asphalt pavement to a certain extent. We don't do concrete pavements very often, however, they seem to last forever. Fourth Avenue Southwest, I can't tell you how old that pavement is, but it's been around a while. That will be the future of 29th Street, you know, at year 30 to 40, probably. Now, I also have been talking about doing a partial panel replacement down on Fourth Avenue to prolong its life even longer. So we did, in our life cycle cost analysis, include 10% panel replacement for 29th Street if we chose the concrete option. The older the pavement gets, the more panels to replace. It is a little bit more specialized type of repair than a mill and overlay, which we're used to, but it can be done and they can be prolonged. I personally, my only drawback to concrete is, at some point in its life cycle, it does get a little bit rough, but then we either overlay it with con, or with asphalt, or we grind or replace some of that surface as well. So that, that's where we're at.
Okay, any other questions for Shane?
When they did 81, that was all concrete, right?
Yes.
The state did it.
Yep, and we, we looked really closely at their section when we chose the pavement section that we planned for 29th Street. So we followed their lead pretty closely.
So Shane, will we be able to have this road either not started or completed before the 4th of July, our celebration? Because there's going to be a ton of cars out there, and we need, we need to be aware of that.
Right. I can't initiate that discussion until I have a contractor to talk to it about, but that is, my intention is to now have direct, direction to whichever contractor is awarded to, that we have that discussion about the July 1st event.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions for Shane? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor.
Hold on, which, yeah.
Yeah, you want asphalt or you're going concrete? I'm sorry.
Do we have a motion?
I would, I would move the asphalt, Alternative A, alternate A.
Okay, so I have an amended motion here to approve the asphalt for, for this particular project. Do I have a second on that?
Well, I'll second it just to get it to a vote.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor with asphalt, a second on the floor from Mike, and I will open it up for further discussion.
I have a hard time justifying at this point, spending the extra $113,000. I mean, granted, I hear you're coming from Shane, but suppose something better, I'm not sure what that would be, obviously, comes along the next 20, 25 years, that, that might, you know, drastically change what we're using. I just have a hard time justifying spending the extra dollars now when something possibly might come along down the road.
He's looking at you for a response.
Well, there was no question in there. I mean, there wasn't a question in there, but I will certainly comment. So the question is, or history has shown that asphalt and concrete will be our primary pavements for many years to come. And the science, quite frankly, for both of them have vastly improved since the 50s when we started those type of materials. So I don't look for a new material to come along, but maybe new additives or new other things. But as with, as with anything else we buy, you know, we hope that next year's model is better than this year's model, but, so we, in essence, I can't predict that in the future, but he's right. I mean, the bottom line question is, are we going to award the asphalt bid because it's the lowest bid? Or are we going to hope that the concrete outperforms it and invest in an extra $117,000? That's the base question. I don't have a super magic answer.
But you're comfortable with either.
I'm comfortable with either one.
One of the things, Shane, I don't know if we can throw this out at this particular time, we've had conversation about Jackson Park. You know, and, and one of the things, if you guys remember, Jackson Park was coming in a bit higher than we had expected. I think you told me, correct me if I'm wrong, that there's an opportunity here that you have some additional dollars from the, from these bids coming in so well. You could get Jackson Park fixed up the way it should be and then go that direction.
That's correct. And that, that extra dollars would be available with either one of these options as well.
Where do the dollars not go if we go with the concrete?
That's a very good question. I could look for a couple of small projects that I could maybe pull together, but right now, this was, the budget was $700,000 for this project, and it was my intention to, that I build a project that would, I thought the bids would come in closer to $700,000. So I'm blessed with great bids, and I don't have to ask you for more money to build it rather than less.
And it doesn't mean that you have to spend them either. I mean, you can.
I can carry it over and do a bigger project next year.
The following year.
So.
Shane, a lot of times we see an asphalt versus concrete. It's a traffic county issue, and how much the traffic's going to grow. Do you have any feel for that? If tra, that's a busy corner with the south connector, and we got the Willow Creek Drive, Hobby Lobby, what have you. If traffic's going to drastically increase, then one might think, gee, maybe we should do the concrete. What say you?
That's true. I mean, that's the, one of the unpredictable factors, but I do expect the bypass to continue to grow in traffic numbers. A, we're going to build more industry and, and businesses out there to the south. That's a given. Also, we're encouraging trucks now to.
Truck traffic is the big one.
Yeah, and, and we're encouraging trucks to use the bypass for both deliveries to Glacial, Glacial Lakes Energy and the fertilizer plant down there. I mean, that's the two big ones. We've got Mac Steel along the bypass, and really, quite frankly, anybody that's just passing by to head west to Clark and beyond, they're fools if they don't use the bypass to get through the corridor.
Right, and then in 2019, when we start working on Hobby 212, you're going to have all that traffic, the big traffic go down on the bypass.
Correct.
And we, the last big one that we did was Second Avenue, when we, we changed that to concrete. We had the option at the time when we did that, and we made that concrete going out to River Ridge. That whole thing got put in in concrete. But so far, obviously, it's, both knew enough, if it would have been blocked up, it probably wouldn't notice it either, but.
It seems the state, Don, you can, you can weigh in on this. It seems the state puts in concrete, you know, that's going to be all of Highway 212. That is our bypass that they're doing. It's just, I kind of, I personally think concrete is the direction we should go.
I'm leaning towards concrete. It's more expensive, I get that, but it's the truck traffic out there. If we really get the trucking community to use that bypass like we want them to, then I would lean towards concrete.
Okay, so I do have a motion on the floor for, to approve this with asphalt, and I do have a second. Do we want to amend that and go with concrete, or what's the game plan, guys? Or we can take a vote on that?
If, I guess I'd make the recommendation to just do a substitute.
Substitute motion?
Right, because the motion's already been amended, and then I would just do a sub, because if you vote it down, you're kind of voting the entire bid down.
So I can take a substitute motion on this to, to go with concrete. Do I hear that motion?
Can it be a different person?
Sure, it can be a different person.
In other words, if the first one gets voted down, this one automatically goes in?
No.
No, I think what we're going to do is a substitute motion. We'll only vote on the substitute motion.
I'd second that.
I would make substitute motion, we go with concrete.
I'd second that.
So I have that motion on the floor with Bruce, and Randy seconded that. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Number 17 is done. Number 18, I just wanted to touch on old business. Last week or two weeks ago, I, I talked about the automobile. I was on the, the radio and the newspaper. I specifically came out and said it was an honest mistake that I made, that I had the car and put it in the, in, in the mayor's office, I guess you would call it. I just wanted to, to say that, you know, it was an honest mistake. The perception that it looks like is that we were trying to sneak something through the council. The council really never took a vote on it. It was never in the budget process. If, if there's anything that is, is wrong, it was my fault. I want everybody to know that. The car was used for not personal business, but it was driven from the, the office to my home, back and forth. There's times that on a Saturday or Sunday, I use this automobile to go to functions. Ever since the, it was brought up, I have not used the vehicle, it has been turned over to the police department. It was my fault. I will say again that it was not put in the budget process. If in the future, if the council ever decides that they want to do this, since there was no policy against it, there was no policy for it, I would recommend that there is a policy put in place for city usage, whether, whether they ever decide that the mayor's office should have an automobile. So I, I would like to say that the perception looked like the council was trying to, to hide this. The council really, I think, nobody really paid attention. I never gave it two, two thoughts that it was wrong. You know, we, we go through that policy, we go through the budgeting process every year. It happened in 2015. The police department got four cars. I said, Lee, what's the chances of getting a car to, to drive? He says, sure. So the car came over. I never thought about it. Nobody ever said anything about it, other than, until just recently, when Don brought it up as a concern from constituent that, that came in front of him. But I just want to make it clear that it was none of your faults. Everyone here had no, I mean, we never took it to a vote, we never took it to the council, it's just something that we've done in the past. Every single department that has a car, they have that budget in there for, for automobile or for car or truck. We transfer six to eight of them every single year. So I just wanted to make that clear. And, and if there is ever that a car were to be asked for the mayor's office, or for that matter, any department, we're going to make sure that that is specifically in the budget as a line item. And every department that gets a vehicle needs to actually show how they're going to pay for that fuel and such. So I just wanted to pass that along and feel very comfortable with that. So, hearing that, any other old business?
Mayor, I do have a question, and I'm not sure if Rob is here, maybe, but, you know, 19th Street, when that was redone a couple of years ago, and then we had our infamous water leak, where are we at now, what, two years, almost two years later in doing the, we talked about grinding that down and getting that, those, all those holes repaired?
That will be repaired this summer. That will happen when the mill comes into town for either Phase 1 or Phase 2.
Is that at, is that at our cost, or?
Utilities will be covering that.
Okay, thank you.
It's actually, and, that was one of them, I forgot. That's actually included in our mill and overlay project with the intention that the utilities understands that we're going to bill them for the work when we're done.
Say, Rob, quick question. Across from the Wellness Center up there, that, the big bulge in the road, the culvert?
That, yeah.
What's the plan for repairing that?
Shane's got a project for that this summer on the, on the stormwater, miscellaneous stormwater.
Is there any way that can be knocked down or leveled out for the time being until that gets done?
Well, the risk of knocking that down is that the pavement isn't thick enough, and we'll back down to gravel and maintaining a hole instead of a bump. So we'll just hang on until we can get the project done.
Mayor, I do have, unless there's any more comments in that regard. I just wanted to, to ask the council if there is any more discussion necessary, if anybody has anything else in regards to the issue with the car. I do. This issue came forth to me by a constituent about concerns about how that car was being used. I relayed those concerns to the mayor, I got an incomplete answer, so I did do some research. I ran it through Bruce as council president and Glenn as vice president. We had some discussions. We had a meeting with the mayor on the Friday before the council meeting, and then we had a meeting the morning of the council meeting, Glenn and I, Shelley and Justin. And the result of that council inquiry was the car would go back. So that decision was made via the council inquiry, and that was the right decision. And I appreciate the mayor doing that. The thing I don't understand is, it's, it's a budget issue. I don't know the numbers involved. I'd like to request a report on how the car was used and what the numbers were involved, expenses. So we are accountable as a, as a council to do that, and we need to know those numbers.
Right, and I don't disagree with that at all, you know, because it was, Justin, I would like you to, to touch on, on your findings, and what I would like to do is, is just open it up and say, Shelley, you know, you can look and, and work with the police department, see how many miles were put on that thing for, you know, traveling back and forth to, to my house. Certainly willing to, to take care of that. But Justin, if you would please just show just a little bit about that.
This is a correspondence that was sent at a request of a council person, and this is what I had typed with regard to this particular proceeding, this, this particular concern with the mayor's vehicle. Quote, "To be clear, no policy was violated. There was no policy that prohibited the mayor's actions vis-à-vis the assigned city." There was no policy that prohibited the mayor's actions vis a vis the assigned city vehicle, but there was also not a policy that authorized the mayor to obtain an assigned city vehicle for city business. Our current most relevant policy is attached Article Three of the Personnel Manual. Notice the first paragraph lays out the $250 of compensation for the mayor's use of his personal vehicle on city business. Notice also that Article Thirteen makes no reference to use of city-owned vehicles by city personnel on city business. We are planning to rectify the latter in our Personnel Policy Review Committee this year. These two provisions are important. They do not prohibit the mayor from obtaining a surplus vehicle from another department, nor do they prohibit the mayor from using a city vehicle generally. However, the fact that the manual uniquely lays out the treatment of the mayor's in-town travel arrangements suggests that the mayor's vehicle should be outlined in city policy. Those that raise the objections from the city council appear to assert that the mayor's city-assigned vehicle use should be in policy on grounds of good governance, given the power of the mayoral office. It is not a requirement, but a preference based on a high ethical standard. The mayor, to his credit, agrees with that sentiment. My understanding regarding the transfer of assets between departments is that the process starts when one department declares its equipment to be surplus. Before the ultimate act of surplusing, i.e. putting the equipment up for public sale and, and perens, however, state statute requires that, quote, "The governing board has, ellipses, determined," end quote, "the, the equipment, quote, 'is no longer necessary, useful, or suitable for the purpose for which it was acquired,' end quote." SDCL six dash thirteen dash one. My further understanding is that other departments can determine whether they can use the equip- My further understanding is that other departments can determine whether they can use the equipment, and if they can, and their budget supports its use, they are able to obtain the equipment for their use. In other words, the actions of the department determine whether equipment is useful for city operations and thus is not appropriate for surplusing. The city council's oversight or restrictive role in this process is through the budget, specifically the line items used to purchase the equipment initially and to support the operation of this equipment going forward. Discussions of surplus vehicles may come up in budget discussions, insofar as those concerns are used to justify an amount for a budget line item, but the city council has not directed or rejected the surplusing of vehicles. In this case, the mayor had the budget for a tentatively surplus city vehicle from the police department and paid for its use out of this travel line item. It therefore comports with the law, according to my research. Let me know if you have any questions.
The issue, uh, you make some good points, and by the way, Justin, I've really enjoyed working with you since you've gotten here. I've, uh, value your opinion. I'm gonna disagree with you on this one because-
By all means.
In terms of policy, policy is to direct decisions, the direct decision-making. And I think we need to be careful as a city when you can go make a decision without there being, just cuz it says you can't do it, doesn't mean you should do it. So the thing I wanna be careful about is, I look at a city employee. If a city employee violates policy or goes against stated policy or not within the budget, they're gonna get a reprimand at the least. And we, as public officials, we can't have a second standard on that. That's why I have to disagree with what you said. We cannot have a second standard on that.
Okay.
I'm gonna, I, I have to interject on this thing. When I first found out about this way back when, it seemed very logical to me, because I think in the end, I think it served our city well, because of the mayor's involvement. I understand, uh, there's really only one person that really knows exactly how this came down, and that would be the mayor. I don't know that. But I wonder what we're really asking for, Don. I mean, if we wanna stand somebody up and lash 'em, let's just get it done with and move on. We have a lot of important things. This is not about what I've heard about a good old boy system. It's not what this is. It's a mistake. It's been an acknowledged mistake. And it's almost an embarrassment to our community for this to go on over a car that was surplus. So I'm cool with your idea of getting the numbers, I have no problem with that, but I wanna know what the end result is gonna be. Where does it end? What do you do with your numbers? And where does this topic cease? Because what this really is, is what I'm seeing, this is a political issue.
Why do you say that?
Because of the nature of the mayor's race and what I'm hearing and what I'm seeing. This is, I'm not saying to you, I'm saying generally within some in the public, this is a political issue. I'm concerned about the perception within the public, not the political use of this in the mayor's race, which I have no skin in this game, I don't want any skin in the game. But I'm concerned with the perception that the public has, that's what I would like to focus on. I can't do anything about what happened in the past. We can do things that stop or prevent it from, uh, happening in the future. So with that said, I'd like to understand what the end result you expect out of this is.
I have one comment I'd like to make. You know, I, I certainly don't condone how this all took place with this vehicle. I, um, as, as a city council president, I have to take a little bit of ownership in the fact that, that I didn't recognize this probably as an issue much sooner and bring it to, to the council's attention. So for that, uh, that's, that's probably where I fell down on this a little bit. But, uh, although I don't condone the way this happened, I will say that in defense of the mayor, um, he does, you know, I worked in, in my tenure with this city through planning and zoning and city council. One of the most active mayors that I've seen. Steve goes to every function possible, fundraiser, the guy puts in miles and miles and miles. And the stipend for him is 250 bucks a year. And, uh, I just, I, I, and I'm not defending the way this was done at all, but I'm just saying, I think- Moving, but let me finish. Moving forward, I think we have to, uh, we have to look at this and, and provide something that gives some relief in that regard for, for the mayor's travel. But I, I just, I just want everybody to know that Steve is very, very active in, in, on the weekends and during, throughout the week and in the evenings. So that's, that's what I have.
I guess I would like to weigh in too, because I wa- I was one of, that was involved in this conversation from, from the get-go. Don, you and I have, have shared some disagreement on this. Um, I don't like the way it, it went down. I, I wish, Steve, you would've taken, uh, a little more ownership of this issue two weeks ago when we met. But again, I, I think it's one where perception is definitely, uh, a bigger issue than, than reality. Um, I'm not so sure that if we were to pu- to pull the numbers, which I would encourage Shelley to do, and compare that to what the reimbursement would've been for out-of-town travel, uh, that the mayor would've used for it with his personal car, I'm not so sure it wasn't a, a net savings. Uh, was it budgeted as such? Uh, did we violate a policy or did we not have a policy? Yeah, we need to strengthen some things going forward, but I, I, I can't do, be any more critical, uh, at this point of, uh, I, I feel like the mayor's apologized for this, it was an honest mistake, a- and, and I can, I'm, I'm good with that.
There's ten people on this council. We're basically the policymakers of this, this city. But the mayor stepped up as a individual and taken responsibility for it. I think it's a witch hunt. It's right in the middle of a campaign. I'm gonna be right front and, and forward with it. And it, it's our fault that we didn't research the policy. He has not laid the blame on us. He has stood up and taken the blame for himself.
You know, just because, Bruce, and I, I fully understand what you're saying, I appreciate what you've said, just because I do go on, on Saturdays and Sundays and evenings and doing this, doesn't make it right that it happened. I can't, I can't say that it made it right. So I, I am taking, I'm taking the sword on this, I'm falling on the sword, guys. That's the way it is. I would like to move on and, um, and see where it goes.
My point is this. My point is, is that, no, I don't want to give anybody the impression I condone the manner in which this happened. I don't. But at some point in time, you can only beat a dead horse so long. And at some point, by continuing it, then I have to ask the question, is what is it that we want that puts this to bed? Because I think it has gotten ridiculous. There is an enormous amount of wrong information out there, and quite honestly, um, most of the people that I have talked to in the public are understanding and are supportive of the mayor having a vehicle in its use.
Mike, I'll address that. Uh, no witch hunt here intended, but we are the council and we are responsible for the budget, and we don't know what's going on. We need to understand those numbers, that's why I've asked that. So I've also sent an email to this council, and I'll say it this week, that I would, I've very much have recognized how active this mayor is. That has been recognized. But the bottom line is, budget issues don't get talked behind the scenes, guys. We have to, these gotta be open discussions, and Mike, I'm getting different feedback than you are from the public. So I, I need the answer to those people too. So this has gotta be, it's been a good, open discussion, I'm glad we've done this. That's the way it's supposed to be, cuz if you don't do it that way, then it starts to look different. Budget issues gotta be discussed in the public forum.
Okay. Any new business?
Steve, I don't have any new business, but at one time you were talking about, uh, sheets of ice and what, uh, what's happening there. You were going to meet with Mike and Bruce, maybe?
Right. We, they haven't got the notification yet, but we are meeting Wednesday afternoon with, uh, with Dustin Brownell, the CMAR. Actually, our first initial, uh, uh, numbers came in a bit higher than what we anticipated. Uh, right now, though, when we've looked at it, possibly different locations because of, of the amount of fill that we would have to bring in. The grounds and everything are good where it's at, but we might have to look at a different spot, which would save us easily a half a million dollars. So, uh, you'll be getting your notification here probably tomorrow morning, that there is a, a meeting Wednesday that just came about today. But we're pretty close in the numbers right now, we're not too far off. Uh, one of the questions that needs to be addressed, which is a $600,000 question, and, and honest to God, it's $600,000. Do we run it year-round, or do we run it for, uh, a normal ice period of time? You know, where they run it for, uh, eight months versus nine or 10 months? If you run it nine or 10 months, there's a whole different insulation package that has to go into it. Uh, if you run it for the normal, like we have at the existing ice facility, it is $600,000 less, which would then, in fact, bring us down substantially lower than our original anticipation.
You know, after I've, after I thought about it, I really did like the proposal where it was, thinking it was going to come in. The more I've thought about it, though, the more I like going out with the old one, only because everything, I mean, we heard tonight, everything's going east.
Yeah.
And all of a sudden, if we had that ice rink with two big ice rinks and so on, that it really would bring, uh, it would take a lot of people to the west side, and that's, it's a lot of people that work out in that area. So I, I kinda like the idea, and it's gonna be a lot cheaper, I'm sure.
Well, one of the things we're looking at, just so you know, and I'm gonna have Shane bring it up. We've had this discussion, they're actually looking at it right now. If you take a look at our event center, the, uh, to the east side of the event center is property owned by the city of Watertown, not in the flood plain, not in the flood zone. There's a ability to put a 296, uh, by 270-foot building on the north side of that lot with parking on the south side, and also to utilize a bit of the parking at the, uh, event center. That would save us the $500,000 if we went there also. What it would do is, would give you a, a really good exposure of your ice facility, and also it would help your event center for people staying there and, and doing things, you know, cuz we always have to try. I mean, we own that facility and we owe dollars against it. So I would like to, uh, see if there's a chance it can go there. The, uh, the ice facility to the, the old one, you know, there is that chance we could go up there, but again, there you've got fill, there you've got a lot of extra, extra work over there too. So we're gonna be bringing this in front of you, just to see what you think of this spot. It's not set in stone, the other one, no place is set in stone at this particular time.
Mayor, Dan, I just would make a comment. I, I've long had the same thought that you have, that we've got that other facility up north, just go in, gut it out, renovate it. A couple of weeks ago, when Dick Strasberg was here, Dick Strasberg is our representative from Tegra, which is our owner's rep, no, yes, owner's rep. I talked to him about that, and, and he said, "Mike, in all actuality, it would probably cost you as much to go in and renovate that building as would be to go build a whole new half." And that was him, from his experience. I, I, I thought the same thing, Dan, that you did, and he said, "It probably gonna cost you very similar, and you're gonna have an old building, old part of a building, structure-wise." And he said, "The cost of renovation is just so, so high."
It would still get a lot of people out to the west side, which I've heard again tonight, and I've heard a lot of times lately, that everything we do, we're shifting it out to the east side of Watertown and the people out here. So even if it did, you know, I, I don't know, but, uh, you guys are doing it, and so-
Well, we're looking at different areas. One of the things we need to, uh, be aware of, if you remember right, the H22020, which had a, you know, the, we worked on the vote here with our city council for a $30 million bond issue. If you remember right, that was, uh, taken to, that was referred to a vote of the people with overwhelmingly support of 77% to 23% to bond for $30 million. This is the third part of that project that we're going to complete, that, uh, was actually put in play by the H202020 people and supported by the, uh, by the council. So I just wanted to touch base on that. It's a great project. I really truly think that if we, uh, if we do this right, and the decision will need to be made on what time of the timeframe do we wanna run the ice year-round, or do we wanna run it as our normal ice is now? Makes a big difference, guys. So that being said, I do need to bring up, uh, another spot here where we have the, the current ice facility, if you could bring that up. Oh, no, I'm sorry, let's, well, I need that one too, then we'll go on to another one. This here, folks, is, um, in that southeast corner of this particular one. That's where the county wants to build their storage shed. Now, uh, being a shed, it's 40 by 104, a pretty good-sized shed. We've talked to the landowners to the east, they have no issue about putting it there. They would like some trees put in, and the county is willing to do that. The county would like to have, uh, kind of the idea that, yes, they can do this, they would like to lease it, they'd like to run the lease kind of in accordance with the ice plex right now to year 2035, so they actually would mature at the same time, and then it can be discussed at, at that time. What's your thoughts on that? It's kind of old business, and I wanna let them know what's going on.
I think as long as the landowners are, are okay with that, it, to me, would seem like a, a good location for that.
Mayor, we've had some discussions on this, and you look at what's going on with the high school and the boys and girls clubs. We're trying to clean up some of this. County owns the land, city has a building, city owns the land, county has the building. We wanna work with the county, everybody at PR agrees with that. How do you, what are your thoughts, or what's the council's thoughts on, we're kind of perpetuating that, that mishmash of property ownership?
This is a lo- is a really long-term lease, is it not? How long was it gonna be?
The current, the current lease on the ice facility is through 2035. So it's eighteen years.
Mayor, here's my question. And Don, I agree with you, we've talked about that here a couple of weeks ago, it just seems like an odd deal, but if we're gonna, I'll, I'll probably be six feet under eighteen years from now, but when eighteen years rolls around, so then what do we do? Then we say, "Okay, let's swap the land under the ice rink and the, and this building." Well, if that's the case, why don't we just do it now? And it just-
Yeah.
Seems appropriate to me, but I know that's not what they wanna do. I wanna accommodate them, but it seems a little odd that-
I don't-
Where are we gonna be?
But isn't it, isn't, isn't it about three times as much property out there? You know, so, you know, it really wouldn't, it, I did talk to Brendan briefly about this, and I don't know that there's a lot of propensity to trade a third for-
But what are we gonna do in eighteen years, is my point? How does that change in eighteen years?
Re-up the dang, uh-
One of the things that you could do, and I know, I don't know if there's heartburn against it, or if there's anybody who wants to look at it, we were given, we were given the facility, we were given the land, and the county has kind of put that at us numerous times, that we didn't really pay much for that. They would like to see, maybe you can carve that little chunk out of there and just, uh, donate that to the county, and then it's theirs, and you don't have to worry about anything. I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there.
I, I like the creativity, but I, I don't know if we can just give away a city asset like that. I just, I don't know if we should do that.
I don't know.
Federal government gave it to us for a dollar. Or who was it?
We sold it for two bucks.
For two bucks?
No, we could sell it for two, I think.
Was, was that the state or the federal government gave it to us?
No, it was the federal government through the National Guard.
Not that I totally disagree with you, Don, but-
They do need some clarity, guys. They need some, they need some traction.
I wanna accommodate them. I don't understand their logic in whole. I much prefer this location than where they previously had suggested, and if this accommodates that versus the other location, then I'm okay with it.
I agree completely.
I agree completely.
So am I comfortable in, in telling them that, uh, we're good to go on this piece? I kind of think so. No, I don't think we can make a vote on this, uh, but I just would, I just think we're, you know, unless somebody really vocally comes out against it, I'm gonna tell them that, uh, we'll move forward with this.
We will need to bring-
The idea that you matched up with the ice facility, so at least we got a timing issue where it lines up.
We will need to come back to the council, the right voting system.
We'll have to come back to the council for a vote, but they're ordering the building now as we speak, and they just want to make sure. Otherwise, if you look at the ice facility, what they're looking at, uh, if you take your little pool cue and go down a little more, right there, go up a little bit, right there, we actually have that tied up through 2035 on our lease, so they would actually move further to the south, a little further down, Shane. Yeah, right there. That's where they would put the building. So it would leave a real gap in that, it would just, uh, there's much, much better things for that property, I think. Yeah. Just off the wall, can you take that whole page up a little bit? I want to just make a, um, a comment. And then I gotta go to something else, it's almost 10 o'clock, can you believe it? When those, when those trailer houses come up for sale, I've actually, uh, told Mr. Briggs to give us the first option to buy those pieces of property, I think it would clean up that whole area very nicely. And, uh, just so you guys know that, that's out there. All right? Now, if you'll take me over to, um, uptown, across from the courthouse. Oh, I'm sorry, downtown. Take me da- take me downtown, Dan.
Take you downtown.
Downtown. Uh, and, and then right straight across from the, um, on the other side, there you go. Uh, you got the Midland Building right there, and I don't know, can you put property ownership on that thing, Shane? Okay. We've been, uh, we've been approached by the, um, by the estate of the, of the current owner of this property. They, the, the Midland Building does not own that parking lot. The Midland Building does not own to the, further east of that parking lot, they only own about where one car is on, on, on straight to the east of it. So they got about two or three lots within that, that, uh, that they're looking, that they would like to sell the city if, if it goes through with the county vote. So if the county vote goes through and we lose that parking, we would have the ability to, to buy this. Uh, he gave us an appraisal, I don't know if I can share that appraisal tonight, probably not, but, uh, just so you know, it's out there, it's not that bad. What's your thoughts? Like the idea?
I think it's a great, I think it's a great idea.
Good idea?
And, uh, how much it costs?
Right. Probably more than 10 bucks.
The idea of parking is always good.
Well, I think it's, at least worthy of consideration.
I think it is worthy of consideration.
It's very, very vital to continue to revitalize the downtown, I think, too.
Right, because they're gonna need parking, you know, that was part of the issue when we gave up some of the parking on those, those areas. Uh, the doc that came to me and just asked me if we would be interested, I said I would talk to you guys, and just throw it out there. So that's really all I've got. Anybody else have any new business they want to talk about? Any liaison member reports? Any need to go into executive session? Otherwise, I'll look for a motion and a second to adjourn. Motion by Mike, second by Randy, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.